All right, good afternoon/early evening, everyone. The time is 5:35 PM. It is Thursday, July the 7th. And I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Ellison?
Present.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Here.
Did I hear a "here" from Parsley as well?
Yeah.
All right, all members present, we have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments. I shouldn't have taken a bite there, I apologize. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to mayor and council. First up, Ms. Lila Knight.
Sorry. My name is Lila Knight, and this is, of course, the moment we've all been waiting for, to see just how much that road bond is going to be. I think it started at around 50 million. So it's gone up quite a bit. And I hope that sometime in the future, the city council and staff will ask the citizens' opinion on exactly which roads they want built. There is some good news in all of this. There is no extension of Center Street across the Blanco with the bridge. So, well, at least not yet. So that's sort of good news. I'm looking forward to what everyone has to say tonight. And also, although it hasn't been talked about much, and the city's website needs to be updated, we do have two city council seats coming up for reelection in November. And the first day to file is Saturday, July 23rd. I doubt we'll be open that day. And the last day is August 22nd, which is also the last day that the city council can call for this bond election. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, the citizen comments is now closed. Do you have a paper copy of the agenda? I need the agenda. It's okay. I don't know the item to read off because I don't have the paper agenda in front of me. I apologize. All right, next up, considering possible action. City Council Budget Work Session Number Two to Consider and Take Possible Action on the following items: Overview and Status of City Manager's Proposed Operating and Capital Budget Under Development for Fiscal Year 22-23; Road Bond Election for in November 22; Timelines, Key Dates, Milestones for Bond Election; Identification of Roads and Segments to Be Included; Highlight of Design Elements and Features to Be Included; Cost Assumptions for Each Road to Be Included; Project Timeline for Engineering, Design, and Construction; Property Tax Rate Impact Analysis for Road Bonds; Public Education and Public Engagement Programming Plan, as well as City Council Feedback, Prioritization Considerations, and Policy Direction. Mr. Hendricks.
Mayor Council, for the record, Jerry Hendricks, Acting City Manager. Welcome to Budget Work Session Number Two. I have a few brief slides to go over with you before we get into the road bond section of our presentation. We'll be going over the overview of our, what our, status of our proposed budget, and then key dates for our budget development moving forward. And then we'll get into our, our bond election information. And after that, we'll welcome your feedback and any questions over anything that's been discussed this evening. Our budget priorities is, we've been over in Budget Work Session Number One, is we want to expedite the engineering, design, and construction of all of our CIP projects. And we'll look for your input on the prioritization of those. Investment in our citywide beautification program to make sure that our roadways and our public places are all meeting the gold standard that, that you've asked us to maintain. Making sure that the landscape is manicured, that we have lots of colors in our parks and our roadways, and that everything is maintained to that gold standard, and making sure that all of our streetlights and other illumination facilities are operating properly. We also want to focus on elimination of blight and dilapidated areas. So you'll see a focus on code enforcement and empowering them to be able to do that. And also some emphasis on our safety and code enforcement inspections. Finally, we're going to invest, propose investment in our workforce with employee training and retention. We'll be bringing forward shortly the result of our meet and confer negotiations with the police association. We're going to present to you some pay parity studies and implementation plan for our non-civil service employees, and also CPI-based general wage adjustment for our non-civil service employees. The current status of our budget is, city staff is working diligently to continue to go through the requests from the, from the department directors, as well as the priorities of the city council. And we'll have that proposed city manager's budget for you at the work session on July 28th. Part of that is going through those departmental requests and, and your priorities, and coming to you with a balanced budget request on the 28th. I already mentioned keeping the council's program and service priorities. And the budget as it stands right now is going to change drastically between now and 28th, so I don't really have something to present to you in that regard. But we will be keeping you updated on that progress as we move forward. And preliminary budget information is included in your agenda packet. As mentioned previously, the next step in the budget development process, on July 25th, we'll get the certified property evaluations from Hayes County. 28th, we'll present to you our city manager's proposed budget. And then subsequent to that, there are two additional work sessions where we'll go over that budget and make changes as per your direction. If there's no questions on, on that report, we can begin our, our road bond presentation. I'd like to turn over the presentation to Stephanie Leibay, our city's bond council, to talk about our timeline for the bond implication, implementation. Stephanie?
Is that better? Yeah. Okay. Stephanie Leibay with North Rose Fulbright. Our firm serves as bond counsel for the city of Kyle, and we will help the city in connection with the geo-bond election, which could be held for this upcoming November. In the presentation, we provided you all with a timeline that outlines all of the applicable deadlines associated with the bond election, including any notice for publication and postings associated with that. For the benefit of council and everyone here today, from a very high level, the applicable timelines or the important timelines associated with the election is a window between August 10th and August 22nd. And that's the window at which the city council has to actually call the bond election. So sometime within those 12 days, you'd have to have a city council meeting to adopt the election ordinance itself. Last day for voters to register to vote in that election will be October 11th, 2022. Early voting begins October 24th. Early voting ends November 4th. And election day is November 8th. After the election itself, there is a canvas period open for that election, and that canvas period is between November 11th and November 22nd. After the canvas period ends, there's an election contest period that runs 30 days from the canvas date. And so once that election period, election contest period has run, after the 30 days from the canvas date, the city would be authorized to issue the bond should be, should they be approved by the voters. So happy to answer any questions that you have about key dates for the bond election.
And just a reminder for council and workshop, in a workshop environment, I'm not going to be jumping in asking for questions. So if you've got comments, just go, throw them out there.
All right, next we have Joe Cantalupo, the city's project manager with Cape Freeze and Associates, to go over the road bond program.
Good evening, council. Just a few quick, I guess, overview items for you this evening to kick off your discussion. The first thing, just an overview at the, the program at a glance, as we call it. There are 10 projects that go throughout the city, across different parts of the city. It's about 15.6 miles, and it's a combination of new alignment, greenfield projects, roadway reconstruction, and widening projects, right? And obviously, they all contribute to increasing the safety and efficiency of the city's transportation network. And right now, what our team is doing, we are in the middle of working with design engineers, nine teams of design engineers that are working on preliminary engineering reports. That is a phase of project development that helps us and, and the city, staff, council, and everyone understand what the costs are starting to look like, and starts to zero in on the scope items and the details of the projects. So it is a phase of preliminary engineering that allows us to, again, zoom in on scope and costs, and to sort of aid you in your deliberations. And then the next slide is just a map. And the map is, is meant to just show the distribution of the projects throughout the city. And you can just see from the line work that, you know, some projects are obviously longer than others. They range in size or length from just less than a mile, the longest, to a 2.8, 2.7 miles. And then if we can go to the, to the next slide, which is the big one, right? This is a listing of the projects. And you'll see, the list is obviously vertical, but across the top are the different phases of the projects. And what, at this stage of preliminary engineering, that reporting that's being done, what we're estimating the cost to be. And it's, it's a huge number, right? I mean, there's no getting around that. And you can see that we've accounted for preliminary engineering, estimates we could make for right-of-way acquisition, what utility relocations would cost, what the design services are, what the construction services are, and again, the total cost. And then what we know right now about the expected timeframe for when projects go into design to when they get, they would get to and through construction. And that comes down to the bottom at 425 million, just shy of $425 million. And then there's engineering services to manage the project. And that variation that you see with that number is, because we still haven't worked out with the city, which will be done over time, whether or not the GEC team will be providing things like inspection services, and how much work we will be doing alongside city staff in terms of reviewing all the designs and all the documentation that goes along with that. And before I just stop and, and, you know, and let the discussion go on, I just want to note that at, at a preliminary engineering report stage, at a preliminary engineering report, there, there are still things that are being figured out. And that is a natural part of the process, right? It is not unusual that when you get to the beginning of a project, that you're looking at a lot of things, and you're just beginning to drill into the detail. And so if the design engineer, if they're looking at two different ways, for example, to cross I-35, for the purposes of the cost estimate, we've told them to be conservative and, and to use the more complicated way, the more expensive way, thinking that it would be easier to back off of a, of a cost than to add to it later on, once you decide whether or not to make the commitment. And so if there was a choice between something that was more complicated or less complicated, and complicated is sort of a proxy for cost, we've asked them to include the more, the higher cost. And the same thing that goes with right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation. They started to drill into, we started to drill in what it might take for right-of-way to be acquired and to relocate utilities. But at this level, the details of whether the utilities would be responsible for moving, or it would fall to the city as part of the project, are still being verified and checked. And the same thing with right-of-way acquisition. So again, if they were going to make an error, it was to be on the higher side. And then the design and construction costs are, you know, just fall out of, you know, different methodologies for preparing those costs. I will note, make one final note about construction costs, is that the GEC team, the team that I watch over, did an estimate of all those costs except right-of-ways and utilities. And then the design engineers did their own costs, and we asked them to use whatever methodology they thought was appropriate. We wanted to make sure that we were all, we'd all end up in more of the same place. And what it told us, that as high as that number is, we were on the right track with regard to looking at the costs. So there were no huge differences between sort of two independent ways of developing project costs. So the thing to keep in mind is that these are conservative, and by conservative, we mean that we picked the higher of two costs if we had a choice. And I hope that makes sense. And so that's a, a quick overview of how we got, you know, what's included in the cost estimates, and where we are, and what we've done so far.
The next presentation comes from Mark McLeaney, our city's financial advisor for Samco Capital Markets. He'll talk, he'll give us our property tax rate impact analysis.
So before we do that, can, does anybody have any questions for Joe? I said I wasn't going to do that, but I thought maybe, and remember, the questions for Joe are not as it relates to how can we afford these things, because that's, that's what Mark will be discussing.
I have one, Joe. This is WS. Okay, so I'm looking at your primary cost estimates, okay? Let's start with, let's say, BB Road number three, okay? Compare that to number nine, Gulf Fourth Road. So the preliminary engineering report would be 80,800 for BB. The other for Gulf Fourth would be 1,536. Obviously, there's going to be construction costs that are similar, 37 million on each. But when you go to the total cost, you have BB at 64,000. You have Gulf Fourth Road at 70, oh, 70 million, and you have one at 64 million. Would we know exactly the precise square miles that each one of these that are listed here will be listed? Let's say it's going to be 3.2 miles or 5.5 miles. So that way, the residents can say, okay, when it comes to the BB Road, the total construction amount is 37 million, but it's going to cover, let's say, five miles of that. Like a real detailed breakdown on these reports, like the percentage of square miles that each one's going to be at. Because I know people are living in different parts of the city, so they may say, okay, I see that also Marketplace Avenue is on the bond as well. So how many square miles would that be? Would that also be included with sidewalks and lighting and so forth?
And I'm going to restate the question to make sure I understand it. So let's use Marketplace, for example. Marketplace is, I think that's the one that's an eighth of a mile.
Okay.
Are you asking, will they know, will we be able to tell the folks, you know, the community, that the project, the Marketplace project is an eighth of a mile, and that's X percent of all of Marketplace?
To give it, in, like, each one of these, if it's a breakdown of how many square miles or feet or whatever it is, so that way people can actually see that this cost right here that you're doing, this preliminary engineering report, would cover, let's say, again, we're using Marketplace, if it's 2.3 miles, that would be kind of the estimate cost for just that specific road.
Yes, sir, we do. I'm sorry. Now I understand. Thank you. We, we have that information. We, we know, you know, within a couple of feet, right, the limits of each of the projects. So for example, the Colas Overpass to Seton, that's 1.2 miles. And Marketplace Avenue, that project, you know, with its limits, which went from 1626 to the existing portion of Marketplace, that's eight tenths of a mile. You know, the other thing we could do, if, if, if council thinks it's helpful, is we could relate, once we zero in on, you know, refining these costs a little bit, is that we could relate the length of the project to, like, a per-mile cost. So you could see that, and I will say, if, if, if I may, that would have to come with some qualification, because some of the projects are a little bit more complicated. So you would expect to see the per-mile cost be a little bit higher, a little bit lower.
Okay. It's, it's to the event to where, when we eventually have the town hall meeting, where we have the public to come out and look at the map, and look at the diagram and saying, hey, this is what the road's going to look like, this is how wide the sidewalks are going to look like, this is the illumination lighting. In that way, when the people can come and see it, they can really say, okay, this is number seven, it's actually going to be 3.5 miles of, of the, of the actual cost on here. BB is going to be five miles, or maybe three miles, whatever it is. And it's just a breakdown of each one of them. So that way, the person who comes in and says, this affects my side of town, or where I commute, I can say, okay, you know, why are we not expanding it out further? Or maybe we don't need to have it that much? It's just to give it to a really detailed, specific mileage per each road, so people can have that general idea.
We, we have, under development and, and drafted, project, for lack of a better phrase, information sheets. And, and so what it explains is, these are the limits, this is what the project includes. Things like sidewalk lighting, the relocation of utilities, it, it supports the implementation of the county, the city's vibe, you know, the, the, the plan, and all those things. And then we could easily add to it, you know, to, to explain the difference in the per-mile cost, you know, and this is, these are some of the challenges and opportunities. Because again, I think you want to provide some context, right?
Exactly. Because that way, when they see the actual roadmap itself, and this one's only going to cover three miles, this one's covered five, they may come back and say, well, what about the rest of this? And they say, well, that's county. Where this lays into the county, this lays into ETJ of Buta, whatever it is.
Yes.
So that way, these people could have an understanding of, like, where the boundaries are of where the city is per each road. In case that question comes up, we can have it ready to go.
We, we have a lot of that information, and it's, and this is helpful, because it'll help us work with people like this to make sure that it's, it's packaged in a way that is most helpful to the community to understand, you know, what it is, you know, the, the voting on.
Yeah, each road's going to be. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Did I hear that there's some vibe trails in this? Some cost for the vibe trail in, in this bond?
She wanted to know if there are costs for the vibe trail included in these road estimates?
Yes, council member. The, the projects do include sidewalk and pedestrian facilities. And if a particular project is in an area where the vibe plan says should be a segment, those costs are included in the project estimate.
Can I, I need to ask who, who authorized that? Like, was, what? I guess I had no idea that the vibe trail was going to be in this much-needed road bond at all.
Well, council member, I, when the design engineers, right, when the GEC, this is us, and the design engineers we're working with, pick up and are developing a, a cost estimate for a project, right? What we look at are all the things that the city has in place with regard to planning and guidelines. And, and so just part of our work, and part of the way the, the projects were described to us, you know, by city staff, was to pick up all those things. And, and there are some areas where if the vibe was shown alongside of, of a roadway that was being picked up for a bond project, we included it.
The answer is, we did. The city, the city council adopted the, the vibe trail by vote of council. And so that proposal is, is incorporated into this. But that's a decision for council to decide what scope in this project we want. I mean, that's what we're going through here. This is the full Monti proposal here. It includes pedestrian lighting, all the, all the different elements. And then we can discuss from, from there.
No, I understand that. I guess when I, when I learned about a road bond, I thought that meant a road. And, and I can see where lights would be part of maybe building that road. I did, I did, I did not know at all, as a council member, that you're saying kind of agreed, which I don't necessarily think that, just because I agreed on the vibe, that I'm agree, I, I had agreed to put it on the road bond. Because I very much want this road bond to pass, but I want it to be at the price that people find realistic for the needs that the community absolutely needs at this point. So, but with that, and I also see that there are two asterisks on this 2022 preliminary cost estimate. And I was wondering, there's one on one and one on four, and maybe I'm not, how they're, what it goes with? But is there any way we can discuss, because asterisks are four?
Absolutely. That, that's easy. We, you know, when we started, we were under a very, very tight deadline. And the timing of this meeting, with the schedule we had established months ago, they conflicted a little bit. And, and so we went back to the design engineers, and we asked them to do, like, one, I, I guess, one extra scrubbing of the numbers. And we'd heard from all of them, except the two with asterisks. And so that's just our way of indicating that those numbers are likely to be updated. I mean, they'll all be updated again, but those, you might see a more, a more substantial change. One of the things we did with the cost estimates when we received them all, we went back and made sure that we're all using the same sort of inflation rates and the same sort of contingency rates to get everyone to an apples-and-apples sort of thing. And, and those two projects, we had not received those updates by the time we had printed this for tonight's meeting.
Okay. So, oops, can you hear me? Okay. So when the residents ask us, in what order will these be, be built? Do we have an idea for that?
That, and I, so that is entirely up to council.
That's a policy decision for council.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Danielle, our council member Parsley, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So an average lap for a sidewalk, it's about four to six feet. Are we doing any adjustments on sidewalks? I, I'm happy that all of these roads, and from what I'm understanding, every single project is going to have a sidewalk and lighting, correct?
They will, they're being evaluated, right, for pedestrian facilities? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I guess my question is, are we, what, what are we using for sidewalk size? And are we adjusting that on the section where the vibe is going to go? Because I, yeah, I guess that's my question. Are we, are we doing an adjustment on the sidewalks to make it the 12 feet, which is the vibe size, to an average four to six? Are we, is that how we're doing it? When we talk about the vibe trail portions that are going to be added to the bond?
So her question is, we're going to put sidewalks there already, so are, are we just widening them where the vibe trail's going to be? That's what her question is.
Right, this, okay. And if I don't answer correctly, please stop me. So the, the vibe, for the projects that include the implementation of the vibe, that'll be built to the, to the standard of, of 12 feet, that's the city established for the vibe trail. And then sidewalks, you know, the minimum would be three, four feet, and probably if we could get five or six, we would. But it's going to vary case by case, and according to right-of-way constraints and other physical, you know, constraints. and other physical, you know, constraints. That'll be further identified as, you know, we drill into the projects and go from, go from the PER to preliminary engineering to final design. But if there is a sidewalk there now and the road is being reconstructed and it is part of, that road also happens to be part of the vibe plan, that sidewalk will either be widened or totally reconstructed, you know, to represent the with needed for the vibe. And it just is going to depend on how the design goes, where the right-of-way line ultimately winds up. I would imagine that in many cases, existing sidewalks that are going to be replaced by the vibe will just be replaced and not added to. But again, it's just going to vary greatly project by project. I hope that answered the question.
Do you have a, yes. Do you have a set amount that you know for a fact we will be or we are estimating we're going to spend for the vibe alone? That you can point me to?
I don't have that right now. It's something we can, you know, we can get to it. When we get through this round of the reviews of the preliminary engineering reports, we can start to tease that out. Because, you know, we do know.
Yeah, I would like to see that number alone.
I just don't have it this evening.
Okay. Now, that's fine. If you can send it to me later on, that would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mark McElany with City's Financial Advisor will talk to us about the tax rate impact analysis.
Hi, my name is Mark McElany. I'm with Samco Capital Markets. We're the city's financial advisor. This has been a very interesting project on the finance side to see. The city is in terrific financial shape, growing very fast, all things that you are well aware of. And that's driving lots of capacity for the city. I've done with PRAVEZ many, many iterations of spreadsheets. And we put this into hopefully a summary form that makes a lot of sense. You're going to see on the first slide, it says $350 million general obligation bonds. This is a timing issue. I was working on these yesterday afternoon. I think the final engineer numbers were coming out even after I finished working with PRAVEZ on $350 million. So obviously, there's still some numbers to be worked through. But as I was doing this, the 350 million, because we're in a fast-growth scenario and remain in a fast-growth scenario, we want to spread that out over multiple years. Now, if we issue them all at one time, we have certain issues that we can't meet on drawing down the funds fast enough. So we want to spread it out. In the first scenario, you'll see 350 million. I have 20 million issued in 20, voted in, issued in 2022. It's actually 2023. That's going to be for engineering and getting the process going. Let the engineers do the full-blown drawings, schemes, after knowing what the direction of the city council, what road priorities there are. We have followed that up two years, one year later. Again, that August 22nd should be August 23rd, 2023. We'd issue 110 million, wait three years, issue another 110 million, wait three years, and issue another 110 million. In order to do that, using the assumptions, and we'll go through those, it would take approximately 13.78 cent tax increase. So currently, your INS, your total tax rate, total tax rate at the city is 50.82 cents. We would project afterwards, after issuing and voting these bonds, that we'd be at 64.60. Now, what are the assumptions on that? We're still growing. We use 10% growth through 2027, then 2% thereafter. And what I wanted to point out, since 2012, our average growth rate's been 15%. Now, this past year, we're seeing a huge bump. So I took that out. This new preliminary values where we're at 30%, and our growth rate still is in excess of 13%. So trying to be conservative, who knows what the future has, but trying to be conservative. We had to project interest rates on potential bond issues. We ran it from 4.75% through and up to 5%. Today's current bond market is roughly 4%. So again, trying to show higher rates. We don't know what rates will be in 2030. But historically, these would be, we should be able to issue below this. We also included or excluded the $40,000 homestead exemption. So we've subtracted that from your taxable values. So that is included or excluded, however you want to look at it, in the nearly 14 cent tax increase. Additional information that we wanted to make, point out, if growth rate exceeds expectations, the bond issues could be sped up or enlarged. Instead of 110 million in 2024, perhaps it's 125 million. It can be sped up so that we could be finished sooner. Likewise, if growth does not meet these projections, we can delay or reduce the par amount of those bond issues. One thing to remember, the city charter says, if we don't issue the bonds within 10 years, that bond authorization goes away. So if we extend it because growth slows down and we voted 350 million, but because the growth slowed down and we want to match that INS, or I'm sorry, that total tax rate we're talking about, we may have only issued 300 million. That 50 million authorization goes away. So what we wanted to show you, that was $350 million. So obviously, if it goes up to the 450 million, the tax rate impact would be greater. But we wanted to show what we thought we could do with no tax increase and give you that idea. And it looks like, again, based on the growth and what the city's had, and this is the next slide, is we could do nearly $200 million, 195 million. Same item. If you look at the par amount, the first issue is, again, I said Series 22. That was the election in '22, Series 2023. And we do the $20 million to fund the design and get the roads. Again, because we're not having any tax increase, we have to wait for some of the growth to come in. We'd be able to follow that up with an issue of 40 million in 2024, followed by 85 million in 2027, and then be able to finish with 50 million in 2030. All of those are going to be able to change, again, depending on what the actual growth is. That assumes that the city's 50.82 tax rate stays the same. So we're not looking at doing that. Now, your tax rate, as you know, is made up of MNO and INS. So if growth happens and your MNO comes down, we'd be moving that over to the INS and maintaining the 50.82 cent tax rate. So that's all those projections. Again, interest rate we used in a high rate. Growth we used at lower than what we've been seeing. We have included the $40,000 homestead exemption. And then those same items, if growth goes faster, we could do more or quicker. And if growth slows down, maybe we stop at 150 million and not 195 million. Because again, after 10 years, the voter authorization becomes stale and we can't issue it according to your city charter. So that's the basic outline on tax rate implications on the various, you know, 350 million versus what we could issue with no tax increase.
I have a question. What happens if we, say we do it incrementally and we don't use all the bond money? Can it be redirected to other projects?
If you don't use all the bond money within 10 years, it goes away. The other, and I would let Ms. Libby address that, depending on how the bond proposition is worded.
Language, the language.
The language of the bond proposition. If it's straight city streets, then perhaps it could be moved to other streets. But if it's specific streets, then we can't move things around.
Okay. Thank you.
Just want to say thank you for giving a breakdown on both scenarios. I think that would really help the public out there that's reviewing this or attending this meeting virtually to kind of see two different options to go with. Obviously, the one that's needed the most, of course, would be the higher bond. But that would also be a pretty large jump in sales tax or just your tax by, what, 14 cents or so? And then you're also giving us the breakdown. If we do not raise the, the future tax rate, what dollar amounts we can work with as far as specific roads or streets, sidewalks on that end. So it'd be just a matter of us, council, looking at both and seeing what would be most efficient for our residents. Thank you.
Yeah, so my thoughts are, you know, this is kind of all based on a trail. You know, the 350 million, in order to even be able to get to it, you're talking about not issuing the last 110 million in Series 2030. So that's eight years, you know. So these roads, while we're asking for the money now, we're saying we can't, based on these growth projections and the tax increase, we still can't issue the debt until 2030. And then the question's like, well, why ask now? Why not wait until, you know, 2030 or 2026? And then ask then, lower the amount and then also potentially lower the tax increase? But so, to me, the numbers that matter the most are the 2022 and 2024 numbers. That's 20, on the 350, you're talking about $130 million worth of projects that essentially can be greenlit and funded right away. Because the projects list has got those, you know, between 36 and 50 months is how long each one, or 49 months. So let's say, basically, let's say each one is, we'll call it, each project is four years long. You know, we could potentially have as much as 130 million or so that we could greenlit right away. If you go to the one without the tax increase, the 195 million, that number drops down to 60 million, 20 and 40. So that's what, you know, what we're saying ultimately. Are we wanting to do 60 million worth of projects right away? Or are we willing to do $130 million of projects right away? And therein lies the tax increase. Because that's closer to home. It's not an easy question to answer. 60 million, when you're looking at all of these projects, doesn't get us very far. In 2013, we made a proposal for 36 million and that proposed tax increase then was 21 cents. And voters supported that over, I think probably close to 70%, 70, 30 is when that went through. But this is, you know, obviously a much, much larger amount. But the proposed tax increase is not as much. Even though we proposed 21 cents, over time, the amount that we actually approved or increased the tax rate was like 5 cents or something like that. I don't, PRAVEZ or Jared, y'all know, 6 cents. So we proposed 21, it ended up being 6 because of the growth. Here, it could be a situation where we proposed 12 and it ends up being less. Of course, it can also be higher. I expect that 10% number to probably be exceeded just based on the entitlements and development that is happening in the community. But this is a good, good time for the hard question of kind of which of these directions, you know, do you want to go? And then, and then from there, we start trying to determine, you know, or at least having a sort of a conversation about which of these projects are top-of-mind priority to the council.
I agree with that. And I think, I think which ones we want to do should take a priority over how much it's going to be. Because we have very little control over how much it's going to be. But we can control which ones need it the worst and which ones we should start on. So instead of, you know, taking an amount and saying this is how much we want to pay, knowing that we have to pay that either way, I think we should look at the roads and be like, okay, which roads are a priority?
Yep. And then another thought is, you know, when you look at that chart with all the, it's not necessarily just, we could, we could do certain things with all of the projects. So the right-of-way, for example, right-of-way acquisition. You know, when you, when you look at that, in 2013, we'd propose $0 for right-of-way acquisition. That was just, just part of, so these numbers are bigger, but we're including the real-world costs here. We could say something like, all right, well, you know, we're going to do, you know, every road that we're going to try to build, we could go ahead and start doing the right-of-way and the engineering for those roads, even though we know we're not going to build them for a certain number of years. Because right-of-way just goes up and up in value. And it's a, it takes a long time to assemble the right-of-way. That was part of the reason why the 2013 road bonds took so long. It's because we didn't, we didn't greenlight the projects, like Lehman, for example, until several years down the road. And then we had to start going out after the right-of-way. If we had went after that right-of-way right up front, we could have solved that issue and it would have been much, the timeline for construction would have been shorter from when we actually said that, yeah, by a considerable amount. Burleson was another, you know, right-of-way, utility relocation, those kind of things. So just my thoughts on that as well.
I guess.
I agree. I think Lehman was a big, had a big issue with right-of-way. So I think that, I agree 100%. If we can start on that right-of-way, I think that's going to save us a lot of time.
Question I'd like to bring up is, what part of the road bond package could be incorporated with future CIP projects? If there are certain roads that the city can be able to maintain, but it's more what we would do, I guess, with the CIP project was just maintenance and repair versus looking at this.
You're saying what could the city construct itself?
Like, because I, all these roads, we already know, they need to be reconstructed with adding sidewalks and all that. I guess the question would come up would be, certain types of roads be utilized for CIP projects later on to where some of that bond money would not have to be used for that? Or are we going to strictly stick with CIP projects that have to deal with inner streets versus main artery roads like we have right here? Because obviously, right here, the bond package are main artery roads that need fully reconstruction on that end. So I'm just trying to gauge what would future CIP projects could help with, you know, that's budgeted from the general fund, that could help offset some of the road bond money? Just brainstorming.
Yeah, I don't know.
I kind of agree with the path of getting the right-of-way acquisitions. Really, if you ask the residents which roads are needed, they're going to say all of them because we're so far behind. I mean, we're playing catch-up still, let's be real. We're still trying to catch up to our growth. And really, it's going to be tough to identify them because no matter what we do, there's going to be some residents that are going to have their feelings hurt. So we've got to really look at these roadways. Let's look at some options that happen. When it comes to safety issues, will be one that we need to look at. I know there's a couple of roads that would be safety issues that we need to make sure that we identify those. The other ones would be, is quality of life. Let's make sure that people, the residents that get to the city of Kyle, when they get to our city limits, they have a 10- or 15-minute commute to their homes, not a 30- or 40-minute commute to homes. So that's something we could look at as well. So when we're really weighing on what we want to do, I would really recommend that as well. The other thing I would say, let's build it once. When we're, when we're building something, let's make sure we build it one time. Let's not piece it. Let's not build the road, not the sidewalks, not the lighting. It's easier and cheaper for the residents to build one time. And it actually helps their quality of life. If you're going to build a portion and then not build something else because you don't want to spend another $30, $40 a square foot, it's going to come back and bite you later when you're trying to build that section. It's going to cost you four. It's going to cost you four or five times more time. You're going to add to more traffic shutdowns. You're, it's going to be, it'll be a mess. So let's try to build everything once and not have to re- put the residents through more shutdowns. So that's just my two cents on it.
You know, another, another thought, I agree with that wholeheartedly. Another thought is like say, all right, this maybe isn't so dire. Let's look at, you know, let's say, all right, let's take 1, 6, and 9 off and then 441 drops down to 260. And so from, you go from 10 projects down to seven, and I would assume that the majority of council is excited about at least, you know, five of those seven, you know, in various capacities. And then the, the number two, Kohler's overpass to Seton, that's a $60 million project. And in my mind, I'm thinking, well, I would think that 52 million, that construction, you know, we're certainly not going to try to foot that bill all on our own. But what we need to do in order to get Tech Dot slash Campo money is get that thing fully engineered and ready to go and have a match ready. Because that's why Tech Dot's not ready because it's like, well, we got to get it to a certain point. So you could potentially, you know, have only a portion of that 60 be a part of our initial planning. And then the, and then all of a sudden, now we're from 260 down to 220. And we're nearly to a point, just in those moves, where we've got the entire amount set up where we could propose it without a tax increase. That's every other road. That's Wendy Hill and Button and Go Forth and Marketplace and Center Street and Stagecoach and BB, all of that is still in there. So I'm just not as, I'm not as overwhelmed by the 440 because a couple of these projects, I think, are pretty ambitious. Number nine, which is Go Forth, I think's ambitious. The, the number six, the Kyle Parkway extension to Lehman, while I think that's a really cool new connector, you know, it's not something that I feel that residents are clamoring for, like I just really wish I could punch through. But, you know, at the same time, and then, and then, you know, number one, the big, the big extension, that's also a road that goes through a new proposed development. So that would hurt that property to not build the 150 extension over I-35 and through that development. But at the same time, I can imagine the council would rather fix the roads we have rather than prioritize something new. So I just can't imagine us prioritizing, number one, over any of the other big roads that, you know, that we have. There's also the idea of like getting in, in the middle between 350 and 195 that I think might could be doable.
Well, I think the 150, sorry. I think the 150, we can't just look at it generalized because I think the 150 is going to take all that traffic off of Center Street. So it doesn't, doing something like that isn't just going to benefit one street, it's going to benefit several streets. So looking at these a little bit more comparatively instead of just, this is going to be new and, and I think this 150 goes through the Toll Brothers. And even with that, I'm totally okay with doing it if it's going to relieve the traffic off of Center Street and having those semis not tear up those roads down there.
You're saying as it relates to the bypass? Yeah, but this, even with the 90 million that's proposed, it, this, this doesn't even get us anywhere near the Toll Brothers Six Creeks area. So there's just a lot more to go.
I get that too. I'm just saying that to develop that road, I think is going to be beneficial overall, not just to the 150, but to the city as a whole. My goal is to get all the traffic off of Center Street. So, you know, and then everybody's goals are different, but when I look at this, I don't look at just, you know, Center Street as a whole. I look at how else can we deter traffic from that road?
Well, let's ask this. I mean, let's just get kind of, now that you've seen the projects, yeah, I mean, I know you've had a look at this before, but, you know, is, is the council interested, based on this list of projects, in having a closer to 100 to 120 million of projects in the next, that we can greenlight right away? Or are we wanting to keep that number down into the 60 number so that we can propose to the voters no tax increase? And that, that's important because staff's got a budget to work on, we have a bond election to call, we have a lot of work to do. We're not going to be able to ask the voters which of these two options. We're going to have to pick one and then present that to them. And, you know, we've got, I don't, I can't remember what Ms. Lila Knight said, but we have very, very little time here, something like six weeks to, to make this decision. So do we want to give some feedback to our consultants and staff as to which of these paths we are interested in?
So we discussed the right of way acquisitions. That amount is a minimum of $36,788,76. So I think whatever we take into consideration, first and foremost, we add that to it. Because I think hopefully, and if anybody disagrees, let me know, hopefully the $36 million, we're going to need that either way. We're going to need the right of way acquisition money. So that, along with whatever road we have, I think should be the minimum.
So are you saying to just get the right of way at the very beginning and add that to the initial project? That's what you're proposing?
Yeah, I think regardless of what roads we agree on, that we should take into account the acquisition money that's required and work on that. Because we can work on that at the same time that we work on the actual, like, other roads, you know? I just know, because I know Lehman Road, there was a long time, I think Lehman Road took like two years, if not more, maybe three. And a lot of that was due to not having the right of way. So I'm saying whatever roads we choose, and we know, I think looking at this, we can all agree, all these roads need fixing. So whatever roads we choose, we should also add in the $36 million for the right of way.
It's up to us. I, I, you know, I'm.
Would you go with the 195 with no tax increase, but add the 36?
Well, that's a tax increase.
Oh, yeah.
So, and then you're asking for two, you're asking for probably two pennies, something along those lines. But you also have to keep in mind the right of way, you can't just go out and buy right of way until you've engineered. So the design column is connected to the right of way acquisition column. So it's just not quite that simple. You still are going to have to prioritize projects and you don't want to acquire right of way. You don't want to design to, so Joe has said that maybe you can't do 30%, you can't get right of way off of, or maybe, I can't remember, it was Leon who said you can't get right of way off of 30% acqui- design. You have to design up to 90 to 100% before you can actually go out. Because you want to, you have to know exactly where the right of way begins and ends. But can y'all give us some sense of what that process might look like here?
I think if you can get to a full schematic, remember, council, right, that you're in a preliminary engineering report stage. But if you get through preliminary engineering to a full schematic, which most people hear as a 30% plan, you know, you might have to go a little bit further. But based on that, if, if the line is down and you know it's going to go between the lines, you can go out and begin to acquire right of way, we believe. You know, but Leon does make a point that, you know, the further along you get, the more absolute it becomes. But a lot of what we're working on, and I mean, our, you know, the engineering community's working on is they're starting to, once you set that 30% schematic line, you can go out and begin to acquire right of way. You know, and, and some of the right of way, once you set that line, could be acquired through, I don't know if the natural course is the right phrase, but through the natural course of development, right? If, if you set the right of way line for a project and someone comes in, you might be able to use your development, review, and approval process, you know, to obtain the right of way. I mean, there's lots of different things you can do if you can get to the design and get at least to 30%.
And then, you know, the other thing.
What would everybody think about? Sorry.
Well, I just.
Sorry.
The, the 195 number, you have to keep in mind, 20 million for 2022, 40 million for And the next bond issue wouldn't be till 2027, and that's 85 million. So in these roads, we're not, we're not going to be able to, especially if we're trying to acquire right of way and do design on many of the roads, we're going to find ourselves in two, three, or four years from now, having no ability to do any roads. So we got to, there's just this balance. It's just some, some super tricky way. And the harder, the hardest thing in the world to do is to go ask the voters for a tax increase. But if we, if we focus on that 120 million dollar number, we can absolutely greenlight several of these priority projects. But I, I worry that if we, if we stick with the no tax increase and the $60 million number, that we're going to struggle to be able to get very many of these projects greenlit. I mean, just, you just go look through the number. Just Buntin alone is, is 30 million, you know, so.
I, I understand what you're saying because if we do go with something like this and say, okay, we're only going to stick to this with no increase, two years from now, you know, we're now going to be at 70,000 people, which we're already probably almost there. We're going to have to go back to them again and say, okay, sorry, my bad, now we got to increase it.
Right.
You know, already, you know, through another bond. Because in, you know, the traffic's going to get, it's, while online, the traffic's going to get a lot worse. And it's not this, in bad thing, and this is that, is our population is growing and these roads are just taking a beating.
So, so Mark, the, the 250 million dollar number, can you give us a sense of what the 2024 amount might be? How much we would have essentially that we could say, all right, these, you know, this is the amount of dollars that you have to, to start projects with?
Mayor, let me, I think I'm going to answer this. I'm not, but if I, if this isn't what you're saying.
Well, and just to be clear, I'm going, the reason I'm saying 250 million is because that is the 441 minus projects one, six, and nine. That's just my number is how I'm, how I'm kind of getting there, 260, I think maybe is what that is.
So Mayor, and I really have to get on the computer to get, to really get good numbers and I'll, and I'll look at this. I think what I'm hearing you say is if we pulled it down to 250 million, I think we could do it and it would take about a 10 cent tax increase. Where I was talking, you know, 14, almost 14 cents. If you said to me, here's 10 cents, we think that's something the voters would do, could we get to 250 million dollars sooner than, you know, the schedule that I have here on 350 million? And I'd say yes. I really not 100% confident until I get on a spreadsheet and make it work. But I think if you said, we think our citizens would approve a bond and we told the voters it would be 10 cents and we, and they approved it, could we get to 250 million sooner than 2030? And probably within 2026 or 27, I think we could get there. But, you know, I don't feel real good until I've actually run the numbers and seen it on a spreadsheet. I'm just going through, I've done this enough with Pervaz back and forth, that I have a pretty good feeling. But that's kind of where I would think. If you said 250, could we get there? I'd say roughly 10 cents, yes.
And the 10 cents still has an opportunity of going down, right?
Well, if your, if your growth is faster, of course, it's going to go down. And adversely, if the growth is slower, it would go up slightly higher.
Well, but by statute, if we say, if, you know, so this is a good question for us to know. So let's say we're going with 10 cents and we're running numbers based on that, and that's what we propose in our public outreach, is a 10 cent possible tax increase. What is the, what is the law related to what we are and are not allowed to, to do? Are we allowed to exceed that tax rate increase if the economy is slow?
You would be. So you would determine the tax rate increase at the time of each bond issuance. In connection with your bond elections, you do have to provide voter information to your voters about the principal amount of the bonds and the anticipated tax rate impact for those bonds. But that information that's provided to the voters is provided for informational purposes only and doesn't constitute a contract with the voters in connection with that election. So the tax rate, the actual tax rate impact is determined by city council as those bonds are issued.
Go ahead, Yvonne. Customer force, Kim.
Thank you. So I guess I'm just curious what everybody thinks about if we have the bond for the preliminary engineering, the right of way acquisitions, utilities, design? Make sure all that's in the bond and then we could do, we could bond out certain roads with it, the first two or three? And then after that, we could add roads every, after one is done? But that way, we can be prepared when we go to construction. Now, the first time that we do this, we're probably not going to be prepared. We're going to have to get the right of way and design and all that. But if we include all that money and then in the end, just leave out the constructions of the roads that we don't plan on building in the immediate future, what would that look like as far as dollars? Would that be in the 250? I try to add it up, but I don't have my.
So, so I, I want to be clear, I don't think that we should ask the voters to, to borrow money for engineering and utility and right of way acquisition and then not ask them for construction budget. When I'm talking about prioritizing right of way across multiple projects, it's related to which projects we do first versus last. We may go ahead and start right of way acquisition on roads that we know that we're not prepared to construct until later. But the, what you don't want to do is acquire right of way and then have to go back and ask the voters for the same money for the same road yet again because we didn't ask them for a construction budget. So it's like on the grid, it's like we don't necessarily have to say, all right, number two is greenlit all the way across and number three has got nothing. We asked them for, so let's say like number two and number three is a perfect example. There's 124 million dollars all in total. And let's say we ask the voters for 124 million, okay? But we're not, based on our prioritization, we're going to say, all right, BB Road, that is, that is 64 million that we're greenlighting all the way across. So as fast as you can do it, go. But we're only greenlighting number two for right of way acquisition. And then we're going to wait until a certain year before we take it to the next step. So then, even though we have authorization for the full 60 from the voters, we're pushing it back because it's the, if you look at the way the 195 works, it's, it's, it's a waterfall, it's a series. It's not all available to us upfront. So pushing pieces of those projects further to the back gives us the ability to construct. You know, you see that timeframe, you know, 49 months at the top down to 23 months at the lowest for, you know, Marketplace. You got to take all of those and sort of stack them up and it's going to end up being, you know, probably about as much as it took 2013 road bonds to get through. And I've been critical of how long that it took. And yet, here I am on the front end of a project and realizing that there's just, there's just no way to do all 10 of these roads in 49 months and greenlight them all. You just can't.
So I guess for now is, I, I'd really like for us to identify the roads we were wanting to target. I know the mayor's made his suggestions. I'd be interested in the rest of council, seeing if they either have a suggestion of their, their own. So I'd like to get us to that point at least.
As far as for me, obviously, number three. And I know Mayor might agree with this, but six is very critical, especially in that area. Especially for the people who are trying to leave out of Bunton Creek and South Lake. And then, of course, you're going to be having that, set of ranch. Having an extra artery to lead out to Parkway to lead to 35 is critical. BB now is just a main thoroughfare, main artery every day. And then, of course, you know, Stagecoach, it just needs to be done.
Yes.
It, it's just been too long. I, I can remember visiting mom and dad in 2009 and them still working on that road. And it's just, I have no idea why it's just taken over 10 years to get completed. But as far as that, Mayor Potem, I really, those are the ones that have always been priority, along with continuing on with Go Forth Road. But then again, that's where I brought the question to the group over here is Go Forth eventually leads up to a county road. So we would want to see how much mileage, if we were to go with number nine, if it's one mile, two miles, or three miles, you know, having those mileages break down can really. having those mileages break down can really help President see, um, you know, this dollar amount estimate would be amount for this. This is why I support it or this is why I won't support it.
So I think Stephanie's about to say that we can't do road bonds in, in our ET, for road construction in our ETJ. But the reality is those projects are all under chapter forty-five, non-annexation development agreement. So I would think that we would not construct them until we annexed. Can we, so the question is, can we put number nine on the ballot even though we're not, with the understanding that we're not going to do construction of that road unless there's annexation?
Yeah, if, if you annex prior to bond issuance, then you would be able to issue bonds, um, for construction of those roads. So you could vote the bonds before annexation occurs. You just couldn't issue the bonds until after.
So at a minimum, number nine's gotta go to the back as far as priority. Doesn't mean we can't ask for it, but it wouldn't be something we would be wanting to issue that debt right-of-way. Because we couldn't, is what I'm hearing.
I think we need some additional information as far as, um, like what roads are kind of, um, combined with a DA. Maybe what roads are unsafe? Maybe what roads are used the most? Um, because maybe not everybody has driven on all these roads and understands like the use or the need for them to be fixed up. Is there any way that we can get staff to bring that information back?
I don't think with a request that that general of which need, because we've done like pavement condition index scores and I think we just recently recommissioned a pavement condition index report. Leon, did we just recently do that again? I remember a discussion about it here not too long ago.
It's on the future, uh, plan, or future of, trying to think of the, budget, it's not future budget.
Yeah, okay. So that's not gonna help us in the next six weeks?
No, 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 but besides just numbers, what else could help us to make a really good decision? Because I think, I think based on everything, all these roads are a necessity and they're all important. And, and again, my concern is not everybody understands the critical need of each road. So what information can we obtain to help us make that decision?
I don't, we don't have to.
And that question, I guess, would be for.
I, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished, your question for.
No, sorry. I, I would like Leon or staff to kind of answer that question.
Councilmember, can you repeat the question?
Um, my question is, um, how can we help council kind of figure out the needs of each of these roads? So we can, it can help us prioritize what, what roads we should be focused on, besides just the money part? Because I, I get the money's gonna be hard to, to deal with because we're gonna have to put that to the bond. But, um, you know, each, each one of these roads has a real need. And, and do you have any kind of information that can help us understand that need or?
Yvonne, are you asking for like recommendations from them on which roads are?
Yeah, you know, recommendation would be nice, yeah. Yeah, any kind of backup information. Because if, if we don't go, I guess we could drive these roads. But we all might have, you know, come back with different opinions. But if there's any kind of opinion or facts or anything that can support why one word, road should get priority over another, I think that would be helpful, helpful to us.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, we do have information from the 2015, uh, study that we did, but they're all on the existing roads. We, obviously, we don't have anything on the proposed roads. So I can look for that information and give that to you, tell you what the scores were back, uh, what, six, seven years ago, on the existing roads that we did take the, the numbers on.
You know, you, you hit on something right now, Leon, and I think the mayor hit on it earlier. Existing roads, like, you know, I, I think existing roads are something we could prioritize over new roads, because new roads are gonna take a lot more planning, a lot more money, a lot more engineering than existing roads. So maybe we're looking at, that might be a way of trying to prioritize. I'm just throwing that out there, Council. I'm, I'm open to anything.
Mayor, Mayor.
I agree to that, because there's only, there's five roads, it looks like, that are existing that will be updated.
So Mayor, Council, part of what our team is doing is we've, I, I mean, sort of thought that you might get to this point. Um, and so we came up with, um, we worked with, um, city staff and we came up with a, a prioritization matrix that looks at different areas. Um, and of course, I'm not gonna remember them all, but like, um, uh, you know, how the road is used, uh, support for economic development, you know, opening up areas, like opening up areas for economic development. We came up with, um, like four, five, six areas, uh, that represent criteria. And then what we did was, we took that and we tested it with some city staff to help us develop weights. So we have a prioritization matrix that has different metrics and different weights attached to them. And we are scheduled, uh, to go through that internally on Tuesday. Uh, and that would be sort of like the test case, right? Sort of, uh, not that you folks are biased, but, um, unbiased by the technical, uh, team. And then we could, the plan was to have that available to you if you needed it. We could give it to you, so it would give you a head start, um, toward prioritizing the projects. Does that make sense, right? So we, we, we have a matrix and, and we didn't invent it, you know, we looked at other things that we had done in the past and what other places had done to come up with the criteria, we added weights to it. And you basically just go through and say, you know, this criteria, uh, up to ten points, I give it a ten. And then, you know, what we could do is, uh, we're gonna do that, we could give it to you to see without, from a purely technical point of view.
Right, but the, the problem with that, Joe, is that a purely technical point of view is like maybe fifteen percent of the calculus that we have to consider. We have to consider east-west, uh, we have to consider districts, we have to consider what the voters want, uh, what they wanna prioritize, uh, you know? And those kind of calculuses aren't within the purview of staff recommendations.
Right.
It could be the case, for example, that the majority of these roads are in District Six. And that may or may not be good for the outcome of a citywide bond, because folks who live, the majority of voters on the west side might not wanna vote for that. Or vice versa, the majority of the, you know, and so we have to try to, and I know back in two thousand and thirteen, that was a big part of making sure that the roads were spread out and all those kind of, there's just tons of different factors to consider. We can still, we still have time to narrow down and refine the scope of which roads and, you know, and, and that's gonna be a process that will exist beyond August, beyond November, into next year and the following years. Because in twenty sixteen, uh, we were adding roads to the twenty thirteen road bonds. It was originally proposed five, it ended up being, I think, seven roads is how many ended up, all, all in total? Is that, is that right? The Philomena Extension, the Marketplace Extension, both of those were incorporated later. But the one thing that can't change is the amount you ask for and the tax increase that you propose, uh, or, or no tax increase. So the dollar amount and the tax increase, those are the, or not, are the decisions that we really have six weeks on. And I'm, I was just proposing to, really which ones we wanna eliminate to try to get to a number that's more manageable. And then understanding that Jeff, who actually hasn't even gone into his, uh, spiel yet, needs to have that as a basis, because he needs to get started on that, you know, pretty much right-of-way. So we need to stay focused on that question, I think.
That's true. You make a good point, uh, on that end, because whatever we put into the bond language, whatever we put as far as voters, here are the roads that were, are going to be.
Targeting.
Targeting, you know, this is what we need you to come out in November to vote for.
Right.
You're right. Some people are gonna look at it like, oh, look, there's two on the east side and one on the west. Or you got all west side, or you got, or just my road's not there, or it's at the bottom, it's not even mentioned. I'm not even gonna come out and vote, which we're trying to encourage everybody to come out.
It's just, it's ultimately our decision. We have to decide, we have to think it through and decide for ourselves. And staff gives us as much as they can, you know? And there's a lot more detail in each one of these road proposals that, that can be sent for miles and how many lanes and this, that, and the other. And all of that can be changed. Not only can it be changed now, it can be changed later in the year and it can be changed four years from now, when they get ready to start, you know? But what can't change is the total dollar amount that we ask for and the proposed tax increase. As long as we keep the bond, the ballot language, uh, general enough to say road, streets and bridges, then there's fungibility post-election, but assuming it passes.
So there will be fungibility, or there could be fungibility post-election. But since your last bond election, there have been changes to state law. And so in connection with, um, in connection with bond elections, if you have a failed bond election, then state law now provides that you cannot issue a seat, a certificate of obligation for a similar project. And so if you keep that ballot language very general and you just say road, streets and bridges and your bond proposition fails, the Attorney General's Office has taken the position that you cannot issue certificates of obligations for any road projects during that three-year period.
During the three-year period.
So during the three-year period. So what we propose as the starting point for all of our election propositions is that you do go into some specificity with the roads that are identified. But then we build language into the election proposition itself so that it becomes a contract with the voters, such that if other funding sources become available, so if you get text-out grants or campo grants, um, to fund those projects, or if there's some type of engineering change or some, some escalation in construction costs such that it becomes non-feasible to construct that project, council retains discretion to drop the project off and substitute in another project. But that's only if those certain metrics are met. But you would have, or what you'll see from our firm with the first draft of the election proposition, are specific streets listed with that flexibility built in? Even with that flexibility built in, because you've enumerated certain street projects, the Attorney General's Office doesn't take that same kind of strict interpretation. They'll look and say, okay, it's only the enumerated projects that couldn't be funded for that three-year period. So you preserve the ability to do certificates of obligations if you choose to do so during that time period.
Another option here is, uh, on, piggybacking on that, might be, and I don't know that anybody's gonna wanna go for this, but it's actually having two propositions. One proposition for the roads and then we could separate out the, you know, the overpasses, for example, and put the tax increase, you know, on that. This is what we, can you vote for this, main roads, no tax increase? And then, and I don't know if you can do it exactly like that, but give the voters the ability to up, a thumbs up or thumbs down on the, you know, a hundred and twenty million dollars in overpasses. The bond language.
Well, going back.
What's that?
I was just saying, going back to what, uh, Councilmember Rizzo was talking about, if we look at the existing roads, which, it's all just existing, because some of them have some, um, new construction and some are upgraded. And so if we're just looking at upgraded existing, there are four roads. And they consist of number four, Old Stagecoach Road and Center Street to Veterans. Number eight, which is.
I see six that are upgrade existing.
No, no, I'm just looking at, oh, six of them that are, that are just.
Upgrade existing, the blue lines on our map, there's six. There's Wendy Hill, there's BB, there's Bunton, there's the one fifty, Center Street and Old Stagecoach. That's six.
Okay, so I.
Oh, seven, Marketplace.
Let's see. So Marketplace is both. Marketplace has new construction and upgraded existing. I'm looking at only upgrading existing, which is just a blue line.
Six.
So like the RM F one fifty, that is blue and green. I'm looking at roads that are just blue, with the exception of number three, which is, has a majority of blue. So the roads that I'm looking at are number four, number eight, number ten, and then number three, which is a majority blue. And if you add all those roads together, which are, except, with the exception of number three, are all existing that just need the upgrades. It's a hundred and forty-six million, one hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. So going back to what Councilmember Rizzo had suggested, doing upgrading, not upgrading, just doing the existing roads, that might be within the means as far as staying under, what was it, was it a hundred and fifty? Did I make that up?
Yeah.
That, that keeps us at one forty-six.
I, uh, the only, the only one I would like to add to that would be Marketplace as well, because that one for our new public safety center, uh, getting officers' respond time, uh, that would be a safety issue. So I'd, I'd really like to make sure we added Marketplace, uh, for the response time for citizens as well. So I think that would be an important one.
And that's where I brought up the point, Mayor, about adding CIP projects later on, incorporating the bond with CIP projects if that would be feasible. Because like what Yvonne's saying and what Robert's saying, these are, and what Duck's saying, these are existing roads. They all need to be reconstructed, obviously. But at the same time, do some of these really just need maintenance and repair? Versus like, like right here, we're looking at number six Parkway and Lament. That would be land acquisition, that would have to be like a whole new, uh, construction and including the land itself, redesigning the land and everything else.
Yeah, I think the mayor pulled that one out of his list.
Yeah, I, I pulled six and nine out of my, and one.
Yeah, mayor pulled out six, nine and one.
Because the added expense for the land acquisition and everything else versus just the construction.
I wanna hear a little bit more about what the mayor was saying right now. Um, you were talking about two bonds?
Yeah, there's just, you, there's, 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 uh, there's two, you know, different ways you could think about categorizing this to give the voters more options. One might be the overpasses, separating those out. Uh, another option might be new versus existing, you know? So that we can keep the reconstruction of existing roads on one proposition. So the voters are, get that language. And then this, this amount for new roads and give them that language. I think that it's dangerous for us to be looking in the ten-year future of the city and not consider that we need to build new roads as a part of our plan.
And, and that way you give the voters an opportunity to vote on what they believe is more important, whether it's, it's the existing upgrades, uh, or building, you know, the new overpasses. Yeah, I can, I, it, it puts it in their hands and they, they decide what the city really needs. And man, you never know, they could surprise you and, and bring it all forward, you don't know. I mean, it's up to the voters.
Because what you're saying also, that if you, let's say number one will be one, right? But who's to say that later on, Tex Doc says, hey, we'd like to help fund that as well? Right? Because it's an overpass that leads to thirty-five.
Right, that's true. So you, that's, how about three propositions? Reconstruct existing, new construction, and then overpasses. And then the voters can have, you know, I'm just giving ideas. And then also if one of them fails, like the overpasses, then that's the only section that you can't ask for, issue CO bonds for three years.
And we can go to the state.
I like that. I like that too.
And go to federal and state saying, hey, look, we tried, but we still need this. So we really need to advocate.
Or, or this money for the overpass. Here's the reasons why.
I, I like it because it, it puts it more in the voters' hands and they'll tell us the direction they want us to go as a council, so, I don't know. It's just my thoughts only.
So three proposals, reconstruction, existing roads, new roads and overpasses.
Staff have feedback on that?
And what you're saying is true. If one of them were to fail, then the other ones don't get affected by that.
That's also, I'd love, you can be thinking about that as you talk to us here in just a second, Jeff, so. All right, let's give it, let's just let, let staff go. It's y'all's turn to talk for a while, now that you've heard our feedback, but. Or how about, how about we take a ten-minute break and reconvene at seven fifteen? Uh, and then we'll go, we'll, it'll be Jeff in charge and y'all can have some discussions about what we, what we said. Does that sound good? All right, we'll reconvene at seven fifteen. Team, Jeff, you wanna go first or just, do we have, what do you think, Jeff? Team, Jeff, you want to go first, or just, do we have, what do you think, Jerry?
I think we'd like to hear from Jeff and his public engagement strategy, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Jeff Barton with Gap Strategies. We were selected by you all through a competitive proposal to provide public education for the bond package. And I'll just start by saying we're, we're keenly aware, as I know you all, that it's, the goal is to provide information for residents to make the best decision. It is not advocacy. We won't be advocating for one side or the other. If you'll see on this slide, just want to note that we've got a great team, diverse people, and men and women, also in language abilities. We have Andres Gonzalez and actually my business partner, Cara Buffington, are here tonight, and you see a photo of kind of the four key people who'll be working on the project. We have done a number of these bond projects across the state, particularly in central Texas. We've worked on road bond projects for a number of the communities in central Texas, providing public education or facilitating decision-making. We really like to communicate to people on multiple channels, as we discussed with you all when we hired them. By that, we mean just reaching out to people in different ways, touching people where they are. You see here, we have five particular avenues, I'll call it, that I want to touch on with you all briefly. And I'll say that we're really focused on building upon some of the public outreach that you all have already done through your staff. We are aware of the community survey that you've done. I heard that mentioned earlier today about giving citizens an opportunity to speak out. And one of the things that we've been researching and talking to your staff about is the community survey that you did just earlier this year. We had more than 1,000 residents participate, 1,040, I believe. People identified roads that they would like to see on the project. I think that helped inform some of where, where you are today, and quite a number of them said they'd at least be interested in hearing about a potential bond package. So we're proposing for the city to reach out. If you look at the next slide about websites and videos, let me give you a brief about how we would approach a number of these different outreach projects. We think of, we think a website is fundamental to the project, so that everybody has a central repository for information. Everybody knows where to go. Your city staff can refer people there. We've been working closely with Rachel, I'm not sure if she's here or not, but. So you can refer people through social media, you can refer people through the existing outreach that you have on your Facebook channel and other places to a website that we'll create. We can have that ready by the end of this month. We'll, in advance, have you actually calling the bond, so that as you get into those final discussions on the bond, your citizens can already be going to a website to get information about what's going on, why you're thinking about calling the bond, and some of the other background information that you've already talked about today, that Mr. Cantalupo and your staff are providing, what the cost might be, what roads are under consideration, maps, that sort of thing. It can also be a place to host your virtual town hall. We'll talk about that just in a moment. And it's something that'll be, that people can go to your website and get to it, but there would also be a project name where they can go straight to that website to get to it. You've already built up a good reputation with some, as being a trusted source, so we'll have that. Then, as, along with the website, you, we, we're proposing to do some videos for you, short videos that help people explain, you know, in the, in the modern age, a lot of people would rather see a video than, than read about it, so we'd like to put information out on videos. That's something that can be shared with neighborhood groups. That's something that can live on the website, but also be presented to people in different ways, and could be a feature of a virtual town hall or a town hall again. On the next slide, you see social media content. We've begun coordinating with your staff. We'll be working closely with them to help generate social media content, again, to be pushed out on a variety of social media channels. And we'll be working not only with your staff, but with Joe Cantalupo and the design team and engineers to make sure the best possible information is out there. I heard one of the council members ask about, you know, I think Mr. TBS, you were saying, you know, what, will voters have the information, understand how long roads are, or how, how much, what the average cost per, you know, linear foot might be? That's the kind of thing we can help put out through these channels, through social media, so that people know where to go to look for that information to make good decisions. That context is going to be everything. So one of the things that we like to do on that website and social media channels is not just provide, you know, the, the raw data. I think you mentioned it, Mayor, there's a lot of factors that go into deciding how a bond comes out, and for people in their own homes that decide whether they want to vote for it. So we want to give people growth rates, how fast is college growing, how does that compare to other communities in the region, what's the tax rate, what are the tax implications for the bond? So they've got really a full picture of what led you all to put the bond package on the ballot. Then, part of that on the next slide is press relations and direct mail. We certainly want to have packets ready whenever you call the bond, so that as we have reporters here, they can get it right. That they'll want to get it right, but this is complex. You all are working with it every day, you're seeing how complex it is. We want to make sure that when you call that election, we're not just relying on maybe a reporter who doesn't cover your issues every day, trying to capture all that information accurately, but we have packets that we can share with both electronic media and the print media, with maps and that, and the information about costs, and they get it from a trusted, reliable source right up front. We'll, we'll prepare some graphics and some other kinds of illustrations that we hope they'll use that will help tell that story. Then, because not everybody tunes into media, we'll also be doing some direct mail as part of this outreach. The plan is for us to help your staff. We'll, we'll design a couple of pieces. Right now, we're talking to your staff about jumbo postcards that would go out in the mail to probably by household to, to registered voters, giving them some additional information, referring them back to the videos and the website where they can get even more information if they choose to. And then you, you all will be mailing those out, but we'll be preparing it for you. Finally, on this last slide, public outreach. I think we, we envision an in-person town hall sometime after Labor Day, when people begin focusing on their attention on what's going on, probably after September 15th and before early voting starts there in that third week of October. So somewhere in that September 15th to October 15th, we envision an in-person town hall to answer people's questions. We'd be asking Mr. Cantalupo and some of his people to be there, so they can hear directly from what I'll call the horse's mouth, and get, you know, direct input from engineers. We'll also have, you know, exhibits and lots of information for people to digest there. We're also recommending a virtual town hall to be a companion to that in-person town hall. We've had very good results with that through COVID. I think a lot of people have become much more accustomed to tuning in to a virtual town hall. In a lot of the communities we're working in, we've gotten more people to respond to the virtual town hall than the in-person town hall. You can sit in your pajamas on the couch on, and, you know, go to the virtual town hall. We recommend that the virtual town hall doesn't just happen at the same time as the in-person town hall, but that it be up on the website or up on, on the net for a longer period of time. We're working with your staff, we'd love to hear from you all, but, you know, perhaps a few weeks, perhaps some of that information is available in a virtual form all the way through the election day.
So, so just real quick, Jeff, you said a virtual, I mean, an in-house town hall on September 15th, October 15th, and then a virtual?
Somewhere between September 15th.
So just having one.
One virtual town hall right now, I mean, one in-person and one virtual.
Okay.
And the virtual, we imagine being open for a considerable period of time. I mean, we'd want to, we'd want to refine that with your staff, but that could be open. It depends in part on how interactive we make it. We'd like there to be some interactivity, so that people could go to the website, for example, in this virtual town hall, tune into the virtual town hall, be walked through the same kinds of data you would see in the in-person town hall, the same kinds of exhibits, the same kinds of maps, the same kinds of budget information, but also have an opportunity to maybe click on a map and see which roads are closest to you, or put your, put your address in, and then it would pop up and say, well, here's what's happening in your area, here's what's happening in the rest of the community.
Daniella, go ahead.
I have a quick question. Oh, thank you. So I have a few questions. Will all of this communication be in English and Spanish, or just in English?
We, we intend for the, the website to be fully translatable, so that you would typically just click a button and be able to see it in either English or Spanish. So it'll say at the top, you know, English or en español, and then people can flip over and see it either way. Then, the postcards, we really haven't, we'd love to hear your feedback on that. Typically, what we might do is have it be primarily in English with some Spanish and a reference about if you need more information or want to, you can go to the website, or you can contact us to hear more about it in, in Spanish. And that's just because as you're talking to the postcard, there's a limited amount of space, right?
And so when you say that we're going to have social media, are you guys going to open some sort of Facebook page that people are going to be able to go and, you know, have access to all this information? I know you mentioned a website, but are you guys going to have any sort of, like a Facebook page where people might be able to send messages, or how are you thinking that the communication is going to happen?
Because you all have such a well-developed, uh, social media presence already, and a Facebook page that people are accustomed to turning to for information. Our plan right now is to develop additional content that could be placed on your existing social media channels.
Okay. And then the last one, but I think you kind of touched base on this. I was wanting to know if the website is going to have some sort of interactive maps for people to see what streets are going to be doing, going to be done. I'm assuming once we have decided what we're going to do. I, I'm a visual person more than somebody that reads, so I would like to see, okay, these are the streets that are going to be work first, or this is where the lining is going to go. But you mentioned that there's going to be interaction, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Councilmember, I think the details are to be worked out as we see what kind of package you come up with, but if you were to have multiple bond propositions, for instance, we'd like to have something where people could click on it, and you highlight Prop 1 and see a map of that, and then Prop 2 and see a map of that, and Prop 3, and then something that shows all of them. Or something where you could, you know, click in and say, you know, I live on Center Street, how is this going to affect me? And it would at least pop up the road right there, but also note that there are other roads on the bond package.
All right, and so last one. I, I just want to make sure if you guys do any infographics, because we do have a lot of population that don't use social media, and so I, I want to make sure that whatever gets put to be sent by mail has as much information as possible.
Thank you, yes. And, and, and I heard you mention infographics. We really believe strongly about making things visually appealing. Some people are going to want to read everything there is to read about it. A lot of people want to glance at some material, get that message very quickly, so we'll work to distill that message down into some graphics that can be used on the, on the website and in context where it's appropriate. And, you know, again, try and hit people on multiple channels, so people have different opportunities, people who might tune into news media, but people who might not, both get exposed to the city's plans.
Okay. Well, thank you.
All right, Jeff, great ideas, and I'd like to, I was going to give you some of my, my feedback on this. When it comes to the videos, what are you looking at possibly filming? Would you go like onsite to the areas and say, here's specific roads, and film a couple of snippets of the roads themselves? Put it together with some narrative behind it, and then later on, we can maybe put it on Channel 10.
You're hired.
As a, as a, you know, continuous, every hour or every four hours to run it to say, a bond election's coming up, here's the roads, here's what they look like. We can even interview a couple of residents on how they're feeling about it, and get some positive feedback on that, and so that people can see, hey, look, here's the roads that we see, here's the maps, this is a voting location, and so forth. And, and then you can introduce all the town hall virtual, all the information from there in videos. We could also, of course, you know, I know a lot of people are using the Facebook, but I'm old school in the sense to where you could see it on the TV channel, you could see it in the newspaper. If a community impact's going to want to do interviews, or KXAN, or push it, promote it, sell it to where it's like, you know, that, those kind of ideas.
Absolutely. We'll package that, excuse me. We'll package that up, so that if TV stations want to use clips as B-roll footage, you know, to go along with whatever interviews they're doing, often with the kinds of budget shortages that you see in news media across the region right now, if you can tell them that, hey, we already have some good footage, footage for you, you don't have to send your crew all the way down here and run all around town to get pictures of rush hour traffic. We've already got that for you. That helps rise you up to be more likely to get a news story that just helps tell people about what's going on. And as an example, when we worked with Hays County on their jail bond, what we did was go inside the jail and just take some pictures, some videos, so that people could see what the conditions are. It's one thing to have it described, it's easy to be biased about that, but if you can see moving pictures of what it looks like inside the jail, and then we interviewed some jail guards, tried to stay very nu, did stay very neutral about it, but what would this money be used for? What do you do every day? What is your job like? So that people could really understand how that money would be used. And I think in transportation, we can do some of that same thing, mixing drone footage or footage of, of roads, along with interviews with, you know, engineers or public safety officials that help explain how this money would be used.
Exactly.
And why it rose up on your criteria. And, and, you know, we, we will not advocate, people can make their own decisions based on just getting good information and facts.
Yep. The main thing is to get the information, have individuals to have to see the roads themselves, to have different types of interviews, maybe the mayor, if he's interested in doing a little snippet, and so forth, adding it on there. I know it's July, but once September comes around, you're going to start seeing a lot of the media frenzy about the election, its midterms. So it's going to be a very heavy and very strong election year again. And so I guess the more we could be prepared for all, as much information for the people to see directly, and continue to push it in a sense of a, of a need that we need in the city, in a positive sense, you know, not leave unrockunturned and just try to hit it in many areas. Even if we need to do a video in Spanish, we can do something like that. We can get somebody that we can get in and, and talk about little parameters of what's going on, and include the people that are, that are Spanish-speaking to get them involved and get them interested, because it will affect them as well. So those are just ideas that I would think of.
Great ideas, and you're, we're thinking along the same lines.
Any other questions by council for any of our consultants or presenters?
I guess, how soon do we need to work with staff and let them know whether we're going to put two items on the agenda or on the bond? How soon do we need to inform you all on that? Whether it's going to be one item, two items, or three items on the agen, on the bond? Is it going to be one, two, or three bond, bond items?
So I'll, I'll, yeah.
Either, either one, two, or three options.
I, I can speak to that. So your call window for calling the bond is August the 10th to August the 22nd. So you would look at the calendar to determine when that city council meeting would be. And then, you know, final determinations, you could say maybe a week or two before then to allow us sufficient time to draft and finalize the proposition language, give you all time to review it, staff sign off before it comes to be placed on the agenda. So, early August?
Mayor, Mayor and Council will be seeing Joe's weighted matrix on Tuesday, and we'll be reviewing that and making recommendations for changes, and we can bring that to you at the next council meeting. at the next council meeting for your review and, and your consideration as you consider which roads you would like to prioritize, if that's amenable to you.
The weight, I'm sorry, the weighted matrix?
And Joe mentioned that he's been working on a, a matrix of, of roads and that's information that would help us prioritize them, and staff gets to review those on Tuesday next week. Is that right?
Right, yes. It'd be a starting point for you, knowing that you have to balance, write all the things that a council has to balance.
So what's the, what's y'all's feedback on the idea of new construction, reconstruction, or I'm sorry, reconstruction, new construction, overpasses as a, as a framework for developing propositions?
That's the other staff can weigh in. I don't know if that's ever been done like that before.
So I, I know Mark said that it'd probably be easier to be two bonds to figure out the tax rate instead of, two bond proposals instead of three. So that was just some feedback from Mark and his team, so trying to limit it down to two would probably be more beneficial to figure out that tax rate.
Can you elaborate on that?
Well, we were talking at, at break, Jerry, Stephanie, Amber and I, we're talking at break, so if you made it easy and it was $300 million, 100 for each proposition, well, then we would say the tax rate is three and a third cents if we were going for 10 cents, three and a third cents per. But all of a sudden, you know, once we have the authorization, this goes to the Attorney General of the State of Texas, and they're gonna be looking at the propositions and say, if those numbers are 100 million, and 50 million, and 75 million, and we say it's three and a third cents per proposition, all of a sudden, we're getting into a mix that the Attorney General's gonna kick out questions. And I think Stephanie's the one that's really addressing those. She's, she brought that to the attention, because originally, when we were talking, let's just split the tax rate per proposition, and that becomes problematic.
Well, I, that's kinda what I was asking, because I thought in my, in my head, I was thinking we could have a, I was thinking of it in terms of one proposition that is no tax rate increase, one proposition that is like reconstruction, if you wanna reconstruct, vote for this one, there'll be no tax rate increase, and then that, sort of like stacking them up. But I can see why that might be problematic from a legal standpoint or even just practical, because what if one passes and the other one doesn't pass? But that's the, that's where public outreach, are we even allowed? So let's say in our minds, we, we know that, you know, there are different scenarios, but would we be allowed to educate the public from the standpoint of this project, if, if it was approved only, would have no tax rate increase? So that people could know that Proposition 1, for example, that would be $195 million potentially, would have no tax rate increase? And then they could have an additional proposition that would, that we could, in terms of our public outreach, that if they voted for that, it would have a corresponding tax rate increase, assuming Proposition 1 passed? Or no?
Yes.
We, we could give public outreach in that, in that way.
Reach in that way.
And Mayor, where, where I struggle with is timing. So if you said 195 million, no tax increase, remember that was over till 2030, and that was one of the things you didn't like, is spreading it out that far. So all of a sudden, it's spread out 2030 for no tax increase, and then, so what we would have to do is run numbers based off of the, your all's priorities, how quickly that, instead of 195 million, maybe you said, we wanna get this done through 2027. And these are the projects that are the priority at 2027, and let's get them done before 2027, or that's the last bond issue. Now what is the tax rate impact? Because one of the things you brought up earlier was not stretching it out, having voted bonds and approved, but having to wait to 2030 to issue them, because that's what it took to do it without a tax increase. So all of a sudden, you know, we've gotta work in timing of when you want things, and it makes that no tax increase difficult if you're trying to squeeze it in quicker.
I see what you're saying.
I see what you're saying, Mark. And, you know, we're gonna be realistically with, realistic with these roads, we're not gonna be able to build them all within two or three years. I mean, we're gonna have to spread them out. So I, I think if we were to do the 2030 with, with the no tax increase, and then if voters were to approve the small tax increase with the other bond, then we're still working on roads simultaneously. We're, we're getting a lot of roads done still, and it'll be eight years that we get to build roads and that are much needed, so I, I see where you're at. So, yeah, definitely, thank you for the explanation.
We gotta look at how's in the mind of the voters. You know, right off the bat, some voters are gonna say, no, I don't wanna have a tax increase right off the bat. But then again, you may have some other people say, that I've read on Facebook and other pages, hey, I'll pay the $10 more a month, whatever, as long as I don't spend another hour and a half just trying to leave my subdivision. So you have to look at it in those, in those sense. But I hear what you're saying about, if we do it with a no tax, you know, but we wanna be able to draw it out quicker because we wanna get these roads, because we need them now. But we're saying that the numbers would be a lot different than just the, the perception of us pulling it out in 2030 when we're wanting to get it done by 2027.
Yeah, so if all of a sudden, we wanted 195 million, which is what we said we could do without a tax increase, but we're stretching it out to 2030, and we shorten it to 2027, so we get some engineering done, we start the work in '24, '25 after getting engineering done, and you have a, your second bond or your big bond issues are 2024 and 2027. So it is spread out, but not all the way to 2030. I'm gonna really need to sit down and run numbers, but I'm gonna say, you know, then by squeezing that 195 into, into seven years instead of, you know, into 2027, it's gonna take some pennies on that. So, you know, how I structured our presentation was 350 million, what it would take, and then what could we do in that same timeframe without a tax increase? Now, I think, I'm, I'm think I'm hearing you, we need more money quicker, you know, maybe that 195, maybe it's 150 million, whatever it is, but we need it by, all of it by 2027. I think that's gonna take a couple penny increase. Now, I can run all those numbers, but I need input from you all, what is the priority through 2027? Is it reconstruction of roads? Well, if, if I get a number, I can plug that in and see what that reconstruction of roads would be. And then I could run numbers, again, using that same timeframe, for the overpass or for new roads. But I need the numbers, mine just, the way I was operating didn't have project numbers, it was, okay, what with 350 million, and how could we spread that out? And then what could we do without a tax increase? Now you've got actual project numbers. I'm gonna really need to get into a spreadsheet, and I could have something to, to staff by early next week. It's just, I just, I, I really feel bad not being able to give good numbers, but it's, this is real analysis that I just can't come up, I mean, I'm playing with things. If you said it's five cent, you know, a 10 cent increase, all of a sudden, that, and you were able to do that in '23 or '24, that 10 cents, well, we can get $250 million done in 2027, by 2027. There's just so many different iterations that have to be run based off of councils' priorities, needs, and each different priority or different iteration is driven by you all.
Correct.
And that's what's very difficult of giving you numbers on, on, if, again, if you said, we're comfortable going with a 10 cent tax increase, what could we get done by 2027? I could give you a number by tomorrow. But that's not how I'm hearing the, the conversation.
We're talking about projects, yeah.
Yeah. You're getting more specific on projects, one through 10.
The, the thing is, it's just difficult for us to be overly specific on projects without having a number to work off of.
Yeah.
So it's chicken, it's chicken and egg. So at some point, we have to sort of decide if we're gonna allow for a tax increase or not, and then if we wanna split it into multiple propositions in order to create options for voters. And then if we do, then how to categorize the different propositions. So that's, that's really where the idea was, it, it's in my head, it's like, well, if only one prop passes, then likely it would mean no tax increase, and we would have very little money to work with over the next four years. But eventually, we'll have, we'll be able to get some projects moving.
Moving.
But if we get multiple propositions and they pass, then we'll be authorized to increase the tax rate, which will allow for us to compress some of those projects, which then leads me to ask the question, all right, well, if we split them into multiple propositions, but really Proposition, like, like, let's say, reconstruction is one, one proposition, and it passes, and, and the, we're saying no tax increase, which is the 10-year project or layout, and then Proposition 2 passes, and that's a, which is a 10 cent tax increase, but it's a different set of projects that are in Proposition 2, can we then say, all right, we're gonna take that 10 cents, but we're gonna move it back to Proposition 1 projects in order to compress that timeframe and get all of Proposition 1 done faster and still delay Proposition 2?
So your tax rate isn't a component of contract with the voters. I'm gonna go back to kind of what we said earlier, right? The tax rate increase is ultimately determined by council when it authorizes those bond issuances. When you authorize an issuance of bonds, you obligate yourself to levy a tax sufficient to repay that bond. The tax rate information that you're putting out to the voters is for informational purposes only, based on the assumptions that are made at the time that the election is called. And so if any of those assumptions change over time, either because the facts themselves are changed, or direction of the council has changed, then that's gonna change the tax rate implications. It doesn't pose legal issues associated for council, but it does pose policy issues, right? You wanna stay true to the information that you provide to the voters, because you'll eventually have to go back to the voters for additional bonding capacity. So the information you put out, you want to best of your abilities to stick within those limitations, but it's not gonna bind or say, because we said Proposition 2 had a 10 cent tax rate impact, we can only increase the tax rate when bonds from Proposition 2 are issued. But that's not the intent behind it. The intent behind it is just to give your voters an idea of how much these bond projects will cost.
And you could include, Mayor, part of Proposition 2 in the first bond issue, too, the rights away. We need, you know, you, you passed both, 10 cents is on the second proposition, and we need rights away for that, so we're gonna use some of Proposition 2 in that, in that first bond sale. We do 50 million, 20 of it out, or 40 million, or whatever the number, some of it out of Prop 1, but some of it out of Prop 2, and you're being true to your voters.
Right.
You know, that, we can't use Prop 2 if it doesn't pass, and Prop 1 is no taxes, Prop 2 has the tax increase, well, we are using part of money of Prop 2 in there, so our tax rate can go up. So we can be true to what we've talked to the voters, you know, I think they would be realizing, if both pass, there's going to be a 10 cent increase, if that's the number.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and, yeah, and let's spend some money out of Prop 2 right off the bat.
We need to try to give some feedback, because we've had lots of discussion, but we need to, they, we need to try to give staff some feedback about what we're willing to do and what we're not, so they can propose some financial strategies for us to vote on that are consistent with the feedback. I've heard lots of different conversation points, but...
Like a number, is what we're looking at? To go with option 1 or 2, with 350 versus a 195?
Or in between. Yeah, 350 is a 13 cent tax increase, which would be, I think, what, what I'm assuming is our upper limit. I'm a figure, I'm assuming that the 440 number is not something that we wanna try to go for in one fail swoop, because remember, there's always future bond elections. We can ask the voters down the road. What's that?
And, you know, the, the 441, depending on how you guys approach this, right, how council approaches it, may be offset, you know, through leveraging of other things that, you know, will become available, right? There'll be a Campbell project call sometime between late fall, you know, winter. You know, there's funding opportunities from the federal government that are, you know, consistently getting announced, that I'm sure you're tracking and we're tracking, you know, so there may be other ways to bring that 441 down.
I think the 350 is really what you're always looking at.
We went 250. We went 250. Let's see where our tax rate would be at with that. That would give us at least, I know it's a 195, but if we went with 250, just flat out.
How about instead of the number, let's back into it with the tax rate? Because we're at 50 cents now.
We're 50 cents now, so if we went up...
Say, let's, we're not gonna exceed 60 cents.
Yes. So we stay under 5.
Just keep the number with the 5 on it.
Yeah. 55 cents. What would we be looking at? We increased it by five, by 5 cents. Just go by 5, he said, yeah. Because right now, we're at 50. So we just go up 5 cents.
What if we went to, up to, up to 59?
Yeah, up to 59.
And that, that's what I'm thinking is 59, because we've dropped the tax rate yearly, and really, we'd be over 60 right now, but we've dropped it every year, and we're actually now still keeping it under 60.
So you're saying 58?
58, 59.
58? We keep it at 58 cents?
It'd be an 8 cents.
An 8, an 8 cents tax increase.
Be, you're, you're at 50, 82, so it'd be 7 and an 8, basically.
If we went up 8 cents.
What, what I said earlier, I think it, I think I said earlier, 250 million up to 2027 and a 10 cent. I mean, can I go past 2027? What is, how quickly, I'll ask Joe, how quickly, if we had 250 million, how quickly would those projects be ready to be bid? If, if we said everything passed and, and in 2023, is this a, do you need cash by 2026?
The time, a couple of points, the timeframes that were on that slide were all as if they started today, right? And, and they'll be adjusted, right? Some of them are complicated, some of them may be a few months less, a few months more. That was the first crack at the schedules with the design engineers. But, yeah, and, and 5, I'm sorry, you said 2026?
Roughly, 27.
Right. How quickly, I, I was just trying to say...
So, so they, and, and it is possible to get most of them ready to go to construction by then. You know, the two overpasses are a little bit more complicated, but it is possible. But, and I'm not trying to be funny, I would turn the question back on you, is you could meter them, right? You could tell us that we need a little bit more time for this one, and, and we could start design, you know, maybe a little bit later, or, you know, get through the schematic phase and just not let it, you know, you can artificially hold them back. And, and, and honestly, if you had all the money today and you said, go get them all done as quickly as you can, you could, we would probably have to work out a schedule, right? So the projects don't trip over each other, right? You don't want the entire community on the construction, even if you, you had all the money at once. So there's gonna be a natural scheduling of the projects that we will, you know, control based on how long it takes to do things like right-of-way acquisition, utility coordination, and then there's sort of an unnatural scheduling that we'll do based on the availability of money, and also to make sure that the projects don't cause too much interruption, right, to the community. Does that make sense?
So it needs, they need to spread out some, regardless, so...
But, but, I'm sorry, one more point. If you came to us, if council said, you can have all the money for all the projects, but instead of getting it over, and I'm just making up a number, five years, you're gonna get it over eight, then what we do is we work with staff, we work with, you know, the, the bond folks and the design engineers to just lay out the schedule that has them all moving, you know, instead of over the course of five years, they move over the course of eight years. And, and that, the magic and the art part of that is to make sure that you can match the money with the priority, with the length of time you need to get everything done.
That gives me a lot of information, and it's gonna help, but how about this? If everything passed, how much money would you need in 2023 to get to the first set of bidding? And how long is that between, and now, I know we don't know which projects, but if all of a sudden, you said, all we need is $20 million, and that will get us for the first 18 months, because that gives us time to do the first set of drawings, and then in 18 months, we're gonna start projects.
So that's the, the point, and that's the conversation we've been wanting... So that's the, the point, and that's the conversation we've been wanting to get to. So if councils were to say tonight, run the scenario with the bond folks about, you know, what you just said. Let's, let's look at them all. We could tell you very quickly how much money we would need to get through the preliminary engineering and through the design, then we, about how long that would take. And then we could tell you about how much it would take to initiate right-of-way acquisition, utility coordination, and, and how long that would take before we needed the big money for construction. 'Cause relatively speaking, design is relatively cheap. And then the next biggest costs, and it's usually in this order, are the right-of-way and utility, right? Uh, sometimes does, that does cost more the construction, but not, not, that's rare. We, we could lay that out, I, I don't have it tonight. I gotta let the real smart people work on that, but we, we could get that done.
'Cause that, that, that would help me determine how, you know, 'cause if we don't need money until twenty twenty-eight for the last project, then I can spread it out further and get more dollars for that tax rate.
But, but I would say that if, if you're, as the technician, right, if you're asking me, if you don't need it until two thousand eight, again, what I would tell you is, the other thing that council could do and bond council can do is to say, you can't have it until twenty twenty-eight, right? That, that, that's, that is the other way to look at it. If, 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 if it's the city's desire, if it's the city council's desire to try and fund all of this, and you tell them that you can do it, you just need to spread the money over more years. What we do is we develop a schedule, again, that's based on the needs of the project, about, you know, tries to balance the needs of council in terms of priority, and also looks at the availability of Monday, money. That is gonna drive, well, that's the beginning and ever, and end of everything, right? It's the availability of funding. So we, we can do that, but like you, right, we need a little bit more direction.
So from an engineering standpoint, we'd be able to project these out through the years. We've got eighteen months, this road's gonna be done, completed, and then this month, this, you know, is gonna be completed here. And I guess that's kinda where we start looking at how many miles we would need to, to construct, would also be the dollar amount needed for each specific road.
Y, y, yes, sir. And, and when we get to that point, I mean, there's other things you could do. Is, is, you want a couple of, you, you take a couple of the smaller, less complicated projects and push those forward so people see progress, which is important, right?
Yes.
And, and, and that also goes into the scheduling. It, it's, and I use the expression a lot, it's a little bit of art and it's a little bit of science, right? But it all, it can all begin and end with how much money are you folks gonna try and get bonded, right? Get authorization for, and how long do we need to wait for? If he were to tell us, you can't have it all till two thousand nine, the last bit of it, we would just schedule everything out and say, okay, this is...
From a logistics point of view as well, from ground zero, you could be able to schedule out, these construction areas will be blocking roads, we're gonna be shutting down streets versus having streets shut down all over the place, like what's going on in Austin, you know?
Still, there's no, there's no way to get around the fact that if we are not going to increase our tax rate, the amount of money that's available is limited. So the ability for us to move these projects forward is limited. But if we're saying we're going to ask for authorization for up to X percent, uh, uh, pennies on the tax rate, and we get that authorization, then we increase the tax rate, then we have substantially more money to start these projects off with. So that, they can key off and do their scheduling, and because a lot, it's a function of our growth too. If the growth instead of ten percent is twenty percent, then our bonding ability, our ability to compress the two hundred and fifty million goes up substantially as well. But we won't know that until we get assessed values and roll, tax rolls. But what we can say right now is a total dollar amount and, and in particular, a tax rate that we're willing to increase to. Because everything, as far as money availability, keys off of that.
Mayor, if I could, 'cause I've heard fifty-eight cents, I could come back by Monday to staff and have, if, if you're willing to go from fifty eighty-two to fifty-eight cents, I could have a draw schedule, and, and I'm going to speed it up, 'cause you, you know, I heard twenty thirty's too far, and I will have all issues done by twenty twenty-eight. And I'm gonna pack them up early, and if, if Joe then says, you know, you have fifty million in twenty twenty-four, but we can't get that quickly, then we put more principal in that year and leave more capacity in the back years. Is that something that you all would like to see at fifty-eight cents? And, and force that dollar amount, like I could give to staff a dollar amount and have everything issued by twenty twenty-eight and keeping a fifty-eight cent total tax rate?
Take the fifty-eight cents versus sixty-four cents.
That's a big difference, that's a big difference.
We keep it under sixty, even if we have that wiggle rule.
Fifty-eight to fifty-nine, just keeping it under there. But pushing the importance that we haven't raised our taxes, what, how many years?
We've dropped them.
Fifteen, fifteen percent reduction since twenty sixteen.
We've seen a huge, what, seventy percent increase in development and it's just going back to the voters saying, now's the time. Yeah, they're not gonna like it, but it's like, okay, now's the time.
'Cause later on it's gonna cost even more.
Would you agree that, two fifty-eight?
Well, I would say under sixty, keep it under sixty.
Yeah, keep it under sixty for sure.
I don't know that, yeah.
Yvonne, can you hear us? Okay, just making sure you're, Daniella, okay, making sure y'all can hear the conversation.
I think under sixty's good.
Y'all, y'all are good with that? How about, how about you, Yvonne?
Uh, you know what, we're just gonna, I come through things in a different perspective, and so, um, I don't think it's gonna be the same as the majority. And so as long as I feel like it's gonna be an amount that is gonna pass, because my fear is if it's too much and it's, and people can't relate to it, that they're just gonna say no. And we all know we need these roads. And so just trying to be as strategic as possible.
And that's why the fourteen, 'cause the, the proposal was fourteen, and that's just too high. And if we could get it down to eight, I think I would feel more comfortable with it. And, but that's just my opinion, I want to get y'all's comfort level as well, as well, to see where y'all would be comfortable. But really, we'd like to see it around eight, from the fourteen, fourteen scares me. I don't think that would work at all. Uh, but bringing it down to eight, I think I feel a little more comfortable with that. Trying to keep it under sixty for sure. Okay, thank y'all for y'all's feedback.
Cusserellson, you have thoughts on this?
I do, but, um...
I think we proceed.
Alright. I will have something to do, staff, and we can follow up.
My thoughts would be that if you're going for a number under sixty, say fifty-nine cents, and that's a nine cent increase, and that's perfect, 'cause you keep it under that ten cent, you keep it under the sixty. Uh, there's two different ways you can look at it. You can make a bigger number, because you've got a bigger tail, which authorizes us for more, or a smaller number, because you're intending to compress it. My thought would be to go for the bigger number, uh, with the bigger tail. In other words, go ahead and allow for the projects to go out to twenty thirty, but with the understanding that that's, we're going to basically go as fast as our bonding power allows within the context of the tax rate increase. And the growth of the city is what's going to determine how many of these projects. And then it'll be up to the council to pick which projects we want you to go with first. And it's just, pretty much just that simple. Alright, well, what about the conversation about one prop versus two props versus three props? We need a, we need to give some feedback on that so that they can develop a proposal to us there as well.
I think if we wanna get a true feedback from the residents, that we put it in, you know, at least two. And, and do it in a way that makes sense. If we wanted, if we wanted, you know, try to just make something pass, then I believe we just do it in smaller numbers. But, um, I don't wanna give, I don't wanna put pressure on the residents to feel like they have to have it. Or, or the neighbors might not get it. I think breaking it up into the existing, the new, and then the bridges, I think that was an excellent idea.
So two options?
Yeah.
I agree with Yvonne. I think, I don't know if it would be two or three, to have existing, new, and then overpass the bridges.
Overpass would be...
I know these, uh, uh, Mark talked about, uh, keeping it in two would be easier for, uh, the bonding, uh, especially the attorney general, so I think keeping it at two's probably the best way to do it. So I like what Yvonne's saying.
So would the overpass be under the, the new, the new construction?
Just be exist, it'd just be reconstruction and new construction, two props. And the overpasses would be in the new construction? Is that what I'm hearing? I kinda heard, I thought I heard thr, all three from Yvonne.
I do like the idea of new and like existing and new, but maybe we don't even need to, if the bridge isn't gonna be something that we can even do within the next five years, why don't we save that for a bond at a later time? So I'm afraid if we stick that bridge on the bond, but, you know, the new, that that might not pass, 'cause people are like, well, we just, that, they don't even probably understand what it's gonna be used for it. And a lot of people that are gonna go and vote may not even look into the propositions. There's gonna be a lot of people that do. But I think if everybody is amenable to maybe keeping the bridge off until like another year or two or five, whenever we get done with all the roads, um...
Well, that was the reason for asking for three propositions. Because I thought, you know, existing, uh, reconstruction, new construction, and then the bridges would be something people would be able to actually vote on, because there's many questions about, you know, at least in my mind, about whether the voters would vote for that or not. Uh, you know, I, I can't say for sure, but I, I would like to give them the option to vote for it as opposed to just not have it on there, at least one of the two, the Kohler's one in particular.
But if it doesn't pass, then we're gonna have to wait.
That's why you break it into three. You, you have to wait three years.
But they just said they didn't wanna do three, so that, so I thought it was two, and you're gonna put the bridges on the new, or it was gonna be, I didn't know three was an option.
So, so Mark's saying it is an option if we're doing it that way with the bridges separate. So, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
I saw it as three propositions. Proposition one is reconstruction.
Yeah, that's what I originally wanted.
Proposition two is new construction or new roads. Proposition three is overpasses.
Okay.
But that totals more than...
That's what I, I would like to see it that way for sure.
Does that add, that total to four hundred and forty million dollars?
Well, in my mind, I, there was only one overpass, basically, to, to bring forward there. So you, you are correct, and as much as I don't want to admit it, I, we have to cut, we just have to. And so...
We couldn't combine...
I don't wanna sacrifice the future of the city in, in order to do the easy thing and just reconstruct the existing roads and not build these big game-changing, like, you know, I, I want us to have some vision for what we're trying to do here, as well as just fixing the roads that we've been living with for so long.
But if we did two options and have the reconstruction with overpass, and the second option...
We can have overpasses, as you say, it'll be, it'll put us over our bonding limit.
Okay, so the overpass scenario would be just completely out.
It's all about priorities. For me, I would prioritize the Kohler's overpass because of the economic development proposals that y'all have been hearing about on the Caraway tract and additional, uh, uh, propositions there and the ability to have that east-west connectivity between Endeavor and then into the Brick and Mortar District all the way east. I think that, and then down into Seton, that, that is just, to me, that's a really...
It's like a big loop.
It's, it's gonna generate revenue for us. It's gonna help with the growth that will then pay for future bonds.
So, so we're talking about...
So has anybody talked to Tech Dot about their willingness to wanna, we're gonna have to work with a lot of people, whereas in the city, we're just working with ourselves. But when you talk about bridges and overpasses, it's, it's a much deeper, I think, um, process to approve and to, to work alongside with other companies. Is that something that we've already discussed with Tech Dot and with whoever else we need to contact? And if not, do we have enough time to do that?
We have, we've had many discussions with them, I haven't, uh, but that was the, you know, you're right, there's some, there are challenges, but just because it requires, like, I think we're gonna have different opinions about what projects to prioritize. The overpasses are complicated, they involve multiple parties, I'm aware of that. They won't get built if we aren't committed to trying to do it. And if we're afraid to do it, they won't get built. And so the future of the city of Kyle is gonna have the overpasses that, that we have. So, you know...
I'm okay with waiting on those, uh, I think existing, um, and new, I'm okay with that. And I'm also okay with waiting on the bridges and the overpasses. But it's gonna be, you know, wherever the majority wants.
Could we do the existing, the new, and one overpass? So let's, let's do that, let's do three, let's do the existing, the new, and one overpass.
That's why I did the X's on the three idea, that drops us to two fifty, that includes one overpass. We could drop it into three props, have it be about nine cents, and everybody gets a little bit of something that they want.
That's what I was trying to propose, Robert, was having your, your, your existing with an overpass. And then option two would be new roads with one overpass.
Yeah, so, so proposition three could just be number two, which is sixty million for prop three, and it could be an overpass. And then between the additional, you know, two hundred and, or a hundred and ninety million is the remainder, uh, you know, we could decide which of those is we want to put in one proposition and, and, you know, new and existing right there.
And to go with Yvonne's proposition and, and what she's laying out is that we can give a Tech Dot on the other one and say, hey, look, we're already funding one. But to Yvonne's point, we still need the other one.
We do need the other one.
So where can you, as Tech Dot and our federal government and our, our state government, can come in and assist us with this? We're already covering one of them, and it passes. But to Yvonne's point is, there's gonna be other people involved, correct? Other state people, the Tech Dot, we can then go to them and say, hey, look, we built one, but we need another one. You guys come in and help us out on this, and how we can do that. As long as we get one overpass, and then two options of existing roads, option two would be new roads with an overpass.
And I know, I know that you've really stressed that the Kohler's one is really needed for those people getting out of that, those neighborhoods there, so...
And it does lead to BB, and it does lead to Wendy Hill, and not just hitting west side of Kyle. But it is those, those people that are trying to exit.
It's mainly toward the east side.
Yeah.
And people leaving out of South Lake Ranch can go all the way through and have a brand-new road for BB and then, of course, through...
You know, and the other thing we need to say is like, yes, that's sixty million if we funded it all on our own. But what I'm trying to, the, the only amount that I think we would wanna start off with on either of the overpasses is the design, right? But the thing is, the Kohler's overpass in particular connects, uh, to, uh, development proposal, I should say. And so we either are going for it or we're not going for it. If we're not gonna build the overpass, it changes the Caraway tract. It changes the, the design and the, the layout for those tracks and which restaurants are gonna go where. And it, so we have to give some kind of direction and commit to it. Otherwise, they're just all sitting there and, and gonna have to just wait five, six years for us to figure it out. It's incredibly complicated.
So recommendations laid out, to write it down.
What Dex said earlier, he was talking about the, the reconstruction versus the two. Can you give those, those numbers again? For the, alright, so reconstruction, that's number four. Number five. Number eight. And number three, and number ten. How much is that? So I'm gonna say it again, four, five, eight, three, and ten.
This is just construction, correct?
That's, that's reconstruction, yeah. And yet BB has that extra little section of new, but that's 'cause it's just a realignment. But, yeah, so four, five, eight, three, and ten, and what's that total amount?
Three, four...
Five?
Eight, yeah, five.
Eight and ten.
Roughly a hundred and sixty-four.
Alright, there's prop one.
So you want new construction to be prop one?
Reconstruction.
Reconstruction, okay.
And that's going to be three, four, five, eight, and ten. Sorry, my mic was off. It's, uh, three, four, five, eight, and ten, and takes up, up to one sixty-four.
And, and there's going to be some, I mean, we can do that, but like, uh, BB road outside of the city limits and the ETJ is problematic.
Which would lead, which would lead to.
That would take three out.
Well, but the, the rest of three.
Well, well, it takes us. Out for now, but we're about to incorporate those, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
As long as that is annexed before those bonds are issued.
Y'all can work on that after we make these calls. If you want to give us that feedback later.
Let's figure out prop two.
Well, prop two would be number two, Kohler's, but, but that would not include the overpass. So, but then would we want to do the Lehman, uh, you know, the Seton extension, you know, from Seton back to Kohler's without the overpass?
No, I don't think so.
Right, then.
They'd have to go combine together. So it would be, what numbers would those be?
So prop three would be project two, sixty million dollars.
Yep.
Project two, okay. So it'd be two.
And then six and seven.
So it would be two, six.
Would be the new construction. And those are, you know.
Six was one that you had previously disregarded. Are you putting that back in, or would two just be seven?
That would be new construction.
Yeah, we, we.
That's the new. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, what's the new construction? One, um, I, and nine were the, the big ones to take off.
Okay.
But so, but we could add because one is also an overpass.
It's a new construction. So you could go two, six, and seven. Two, six, and seven, and there's your overpass for new construction.
Two, six, and seven, what, how much is that?
Did you have Lehman extension and then you have the Market Avenue?
Hundred and three. Count, counting all of sixty.
So could we add to that one still?
Well, that's just two props, you know, but that's not, that's not too bad.
Because you have one sixty-five on prop one for those roads. Now you're looking at, what, one oh three?
So that takes us about two, two sixty-seven, which is not bad.
Because we were pushing two fifty. We're, we're asking for two fifty.
Yeah, so one oh three. Nope, I like it.
Using those numbers, let me, let me run those tax rate to see how it would play out at fifty-nine cents.
Okay.
And, and that's in, if we can get to two sixty-seven and you all are comfortable with it, great. If not, you maybe have to pair back a road or something.
Jeff, what do you think about the, the idea of public outreach on the basis of reconstruction and new construction?
I think it's interesting. It, it complicates it a little bit, obviously. You've got to tell a little bit more complex story. I think if we can get there, um, and I do think it, it, you know, gives people lots of choice, which, that's something we can emphasize in the, in the outreach. So I think if, if you decide you want to go that way, we can make the public engagement work on it.
I guess my question would be, because it's at two fifty, if we do it, will we just do it all in one bond at two fifty? Or breaking it up like this would be better? What, just your opinion is what I'm asking for. Because you've got a lot of experience in this.
What we've seen is, we, we were just, we were just texting back and forth about it. You know, we've seen, working with Flugerville, Cedar Park, Beeter recently, they have, it, it is more typical to package it together. Used to see, I used to see more bonds broken up into multiple propositions, and we, we've seen a few do it that way. But, uh, we've seen lately more cities doing all transportation in one package, parks in another, public facilities in yet another. That doesn't mean it's right or wrong. If you're asking me, I think it's probably better than given that great big number. I think people probably want some choice. But I, I, I think that you all are in a better position to know that than me. I think just from a, just from a public outreach perspective, letting people know that they've got that choice i- i- is good. I, I worry a little bit about if you say, here's our primary package. It's hard to predict which one might pass or which one might fail. So I think you all have to make sure that you're comfortable that any of the three might pass alone or two of the three might pass.
Yeah, we're doing two now, so.
Yeah, I think we're down to two.
We're down to two. So, uh.
Right.
I, I think we're good. I just want your input on, on that because you do have some experience in this and just kind of want some feedback.
And it, you know, and in my mind, if, if, if prop one passes and prop two failed, well, then we've got our heading. We know we're not going to be doing the overpass. It gives us clarity on the Caraway tract and BB, uh, as far as how that configuration might look. And the Kyle Parkway extension also is something that we're not going to do. But we have full heading on the rest. So, but, so let's, let's think that through. If prop one passed and prop two failed, but we still wanted to raise the tax rate to fifty-nine cents because we would know that it would allow for us to build all these roads at once, for example, you know, or, you know, of the ones, would we, would we want to preserve our ability to do that, is what I'm saying? We want to make sure that, that, and that's where putting it all together is why it comes, kind of comes back to that. Because if prop one passes and prop two fails, then we can't raise our tax rate. Then we're going to be looking at, well, great, we had all these reconstruction road projects, hundred and sixty-five million. But realistically, without raising our tax rate at all, we can only do two roads in the next five years. And the rest are going to have to wait.
So I think from a public outreach perspective, you're getting to why that gets a little bit more complicated, right? You can see it right here. Explaining that story is not as simple. But I do think it's offset by the fact that people appreciate getting choice.
And then you can have your voters saying again, why are you selecting these roads versus my road versus his road? That'll be the negative feedback on that end.
I think we need to just put this.
Unless you just do it as a generic.
Prop one, prop two.
Prop one, prop two, all the way across with no roads listed, just saying construction.
The voters, uh.
Just saying construction with one overpass, one, or reconstruction, or new roads with one overpass, and then we just, and then we, and here's the tax increase for this one, tax increase for that one. Whatever passes, then we can say, okay, was our priority.
Yvonne, Daniella, y'all catch all that? Okay, you're on mute, Yvonne.
I'd like to option that of having the two, um, the new construction and the all, um, and the reconstruction.
Yvonne?
Okay, can we, can we reconfirm the proposition? Like proposition one I got was three, four, five, eight, and ten?
Correct.
And then there was another one for two, six, and seven? Was that prop two or was that?
That's prop two.
Going to be a prop three?
That's prop two.
Okay, and then are there?
There's no prop three.
So there's none for, perfect, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Okay, and that's, and the number.
Oh, it's not one and nine? I thought it was one and nine.
So, so.
Four, five, eight, ten.
On, on prop one, it's going to be three, four, five, eight, and ten. Takes the number to a hundred and sixty-four mil. On prop two, it's two, six, seven, and it takes up the prop to one oh three. So combining both, uh, if you want to combine both numbers, you're looking at two, two, six, seven. But, uh.
That's perfect.
Okay.
It's not bad.
All right.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Good teamwork.
Yeah, great job, guys. Thank you all.
Just for clarification from consultant standpoint, are you talking about listing just reconstruction and not listing any roads? Is that what I heard you say, council member? Or would you, would you list out those projects that you just mentioned, two, six, seven?
The roads that we've mentioned there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just to provide some devil's advocacy associated with this. I mean, there is a, a difference between the two prop numbers and one sixty-four and one oh three. But theoretically, you could do both without a tax rate increase. And so I think the council should also consider the fact that voters may vote for prop two and not prop one to get new construction without a tax rate increase. And that would leave you without the ability to reconstruct what you currently have. Just a thought.
We'll just leave the names off and just go with.
Option one and option two, is what we're saying?
But then there's no distinction.
No, prop one would be no tax increase.
Might as well put it all together and say, this is what we're proposing. We're proposing two sixty-seven, fifty-nine cent tax for these projects.
All these projects, yeah.
I could see it going.
I don't want to do that.
Yeah. But you, but you are correct.
I like you doing two.
We just, we have to go into it knowing that there is some risk that the vote, the outcome of the election might throw our plans into some state of turmoil. Because if one prop, in, in particular, the outcome that would throw us into turmoil would be that prop two passed and prop one failed.
So, so to be the language. So language saying prop one has no tax increase, prop two gives you a tax increase of point something if passed.
Could we do prop one is five cents, prop two is four cents?
I think that might be more appropriate.
Roughly speaking.
Yeah. Give the rough proportionality of the taxes.
And then let the decision on the roads be just our project. We just need the funding.
Yep.
Let them decide the funding, like what you're saying, prop one with this dollar amount, prop two with this dollar amount. And then again, we can go back, once we, whatever passes.
So, so the question is.
We can then design, then we can then choose, okay, we've already decided what roads from us are important. So that's done there.
Right.
But what the voters need to see is the dollar amount. Option one's going to cost me this much or option two's going to cost me this much.
Right, so it's, as opposed to, because it almost feels like the no tax increase versus a big tax increase might even be somewhat disingenuous, let's say.
Yeah.
If we give them the, uh, the, this is the dollar amount and the corresponding value, tax value, then they get to just, so it's not about, do you want a tax increase or no tax increase? It's, do you want reconstruction? And that's how much it costs and the tax as pennies associated? And then do you want the new construction? And then that's, that's pretty much straightforward.
So prop one would be four cent, uh, tax increase, prop two would be a five cent increase?
Flip that.
I, I, I think it'd have to be proportional, so.
Proportionate.
A hundred and sixty-four million is prop one. And let's say, just for math, is nine, nine cents is what we're talking about combined. Maybe one's five and the other's four, one's six and the other's three. But it'd be proportional so that when Stephanie goes to the Attorney General and they see it, they can see, okay, they're not the same, but they're, you know, this is combined, it's nine cents. Hundred, hundred and sixty is sixty percent, so it's sixty percent of nine.
Okay.
That, I think that's the, the cleanest way that won't get us in a problem with authorized bonds and then a problem with the AG's office.
AG's office, yeah, we don't want any issues there, so.
If it fails, then we can't do anything.
Right. And then I think to the mayor's point, you know, if you have one pass and the other doesn't, you would preserve the flexibility to accelerate some of your bond projects because you've placed that tax rate increase before the voters.
Right.
And you have capacity associated with.
Construction.
Mm-hmm.
It would accelerate a lot.
It would accelerate, right.
Sounds good. I think we're there.
I like that from a public, I like that from a public perception and public explanation perspective as well.
All right, so when do we get, when do we meet again to get some more refined proposals that we can start to take votes on?
The next, uh, regularly scheduled council meeting will be in two weeks, week and a half. We can present the, these numbers to you then, or there could be a special council meeting where we do that.
Do I want to add this discussion to a regular council meeting?
I'd rather have a special, just to have time to really weigh in and disseminate all the information. Daniella, Yvonne, would, would y'all mind a special council meeting for this? Because I think it would take a lot of discussion during a council meeting.
I don't mind. I, I agree.
Okay.
That's what we need to do, I think. We, no, no rush decisions and maybe in the meantime, we can have residents reach out or, you know, some of us can talk to them. I think it's, I think it's good to, to not rush into anything.
Yeah. And just be careful about information going out because there's still going to be some changes. And, uh, once we get back from the bond council. Yeah, once the bond council comes back, then I would feel more comfortable reaching out to residents because then we're giving real information out and, and not guestimates, so, yeah.
Mayor?
They could literally just watch this video too.
Oh, yeah, they could definitely watch this. That, that would actually be awesome.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, that would be great.
Something maybe mayor and council to consider when you're scheduling is that, uh, tomorrow, our comments on the first draft of the PERs, that, and that was represented on the table we talked about before. Our comments go back to the design engineers and, um, our schedule that we had established has them getting, uh, the final PERs that address all of our comments back to us by the eighteenth. And, and so, you know, we could.
How about the twenty-third?
That would, yeah, that would give us time to get everything in your hands and you guys could read through, you know, all the detail having, um, come, you know, for each project.
Twenty-third is Saturday. Could have a Saturday morning workshop. I know there's desires for weeknights, but we have a lot of weeknight meetings. And that's good for some and not good for others, but does anybody have thoughts on a eight AM meeting on the twenty-third, eight or nine AM?
Does it matter? Yeah. But, but I think the next week, we're going to get like the certified results back. Does it matter to anybody, whether we get those numbers back for the taxes? From Haze Cat? Does anybody know what I'm talking about?
From my standpoint, um, it, it won't, anytime I get better data, of course, I'd, I'd prefer better data. But since this is based off of twenty fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, we won't have them sold until fiscal year, uh, twenty-three, which will be paid for in fiscal year twenty-four, which is going to be next year's tax values. You know, I, I never argue about getting bad, better data. But right now, um, that won't make a big difference in what we're calculating.
Well, I just want to make sure that if there, maybe somehow we could budget, if there's been a big enough increase to do some of these things on our own prior to. But if, if that's not in the interest of anybody, then I'm okay with just doing it on that, that Saturday.
All right.
I'm out of town, but I, I can check with one of my partners.
Okay.
I'm at a wedding.
It's, it's understandable, we have lots of, lots of meetings, so. All right, going once, going twice on the twenty-third, eight AM. Jennifer, you got that? All right. I think we're done. Any, any further comments?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.